Start off our meeting, um, before we get started with some statements from Porter regarding the procedure for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Porter Arneal, and as Mayor Ananda said, I'll be facilitating-
I can't hear you.
Uh-oh.
Hear you, Porter.
We're getting feedback somewhere else. Hang on.
I'm hearing someone talking, but it is not Porter.
Okay. Is this better, Mayor? Can you hear me now? Oh, here we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Too many technology aspects here. Um, thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Porter Arneal, and as Mayor Ananda said, I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of tonight's meeting. With me here is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. She'll work alongside Mayor Ananda to facilitate the meeting proceedings. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and public access Channel 25. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found on the lower-left-hand side of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. Muting your microphone during the meeting will make it easier for everyone to hear. You'll just have to remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. In some cases, I may mute or unmute people as needed. Each time you speak, please remember to state your name and title for the benefit of those listening remotely. In the menu, you can also turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on during the meeting. If you're participating by phone, you can click star six to unmute your phone. For those using Zoom, somewhere on your screen you will see a choice to toggle between speaker and gallery view. Speaker view shows the active speaker. Gallery view tiles all the meeting participants. And now I'll turn the meeting back to Mayor Ananda.
Thank you, Porter. We are going to do roll call, and then we'll hear from Sherry. I will make a quick statement about our, um, uh, executive session this evening, and then we will move into the agenda. Um, Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
And I am Mayor Ananda. We are all present. Um, so we will have a little bit from Sherry about, about the process this evening.
That's Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to provide a few reminders to ensure that the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act are met. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, the mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Mayor, you will then need to announce whether the motion carried and include the count of the vote. Various members of city staff are present via Zoom, and they must also state their name and title each time they speak. Members of the public are allowed to speak to certain agenda items, and these items are specifically noted on the meeting agenda. Individuals who signed up in advance to provide public comment remotely will be called upon by name. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. The mayor will then call for in-person public comment for those without access to technology options. Staff present will direct you to the podium to speak, following social distancing and safety protocols. The regular three-minute time limit will apply. And again, just to remind everyone to make sure, unmute yourself when you are not speaking.
This is Mayor Ananda. Thank you, Sherry. So, um, I will read a piece on our executive session this evening. There are two executive sessions on tonight's agenda. When the motion is made to recess into executive session, the commission will leave the Zoom meeting and go into a separate Zoom meeting. When the time scheduled for the executive session has elapsed, the commission will return to the Zoom meeting and reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting. So, um, at this point, we are prepared to jump into our regular agenda for this evening. The first is to approve our agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Are there any modifications that a commissioner wishes to see in the agenda tonight?
Commissioner Larson, I move to approve the agenda.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, second.
This is Mayor Ananda. There was a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. Our next item- ... commitment to public safety and for compliance with the Kansas governor's orders. Individuals or groups will not be allowed to attend the commission meetings to make remarks and receive their proclamations. Instead, we will be promoting the proclamations on our social media. The first proclamation that we have is to proclaim the month of July 2020 as Lunch Across Kansas Month, and the second proclamation is to proclaim the month of July 2020 as Parks and Recreation Month. So those will be promoted via social media during the month. The next item is the consent agenda. Note that all matters listed below on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Only those items noted with yellow highlight, bold print, and italics print are eligible for live public comment, and the public will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items that a member of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I'd like to remove C8A.
Any other items? I would like to remove, um, item C6A for voting purposes. Are we ready for a motion?
Mayor, there were- We do have some, uh, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. We do have some members of the public present, and I believe there were a few items on the- Did we, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any items on the consent that could be re- removed.
Um, items C8D and E, whoops, aren't eligible.
Right, and Porter is check, sorry, Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Porter is checking to see if they are, wanted to speak to either of those items, or pull either of those items. So no one is speaking to the C8D or E.
Okay. We have two agenda items currently, um, pulled off the consent agenda. C8-
Well, C8D and E are allowed, are open for public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, no, don't, I don't- Okay, so you- Okay.
Mayor, this, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, and there isn't anyone present that wants to speak to either of those items on the consent.
This is Mayor Ananda. Thank you, Sherry. Do we have a motion? And again, the ones that we discussed pulling were C8A and C6A.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I move for approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of C6A and C8A.
Commissioner Larson, second.
The motion from, this is Mayor Ananda. There was a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldein, a second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously. We will now move on to C6A. I don't have any discussion around this. I just wanted to pull it for, um, voting purposes. I don't know if anyone else has any discussion that they want to have.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Um, I move for approval of item C6A.
Is that sufficient for a motion? Sherry?
Um, if you could, uh, sorry, Sherry Redeman, City Clerk, if you could adopt on second and final reading of ordinance, please.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, I would move for approval of the adoption of the second reading of ordinance number 9754, providing an exemption from the general prohibition against illegal camping on any public right-of-way or public property located within the area of the city sewn, CD, when there's no available overnight shelter.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I will second that motion.
This is Mayor Ananda. There was a motion by Vice Mayor Finkeldein, a second by Commissioner Bulley. Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, nay, and that passes four to one with Mayor Ananda voting against. And then our second item that we pulled was C8A.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I just have a, a conflict, and I do not wish to vote on that item.
This is Commissioner Larson. I, I have a conflict with this item, and I wa, I would like to recuse myself.
Any other discussion from commissioners? Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Bulley, I, um, move that we authorize the mayor to execute a contract for purchase and sale of real estate in the amount of $222,500, in exchange for which the city will receive a warranty deed granting a title and fee simple to eighteen, to eight, one-two Ohio Street, a release from plaintiff in the case styled Geisler et al. versus the City of Lawrence, Kansas, case number 2019CB58, and full dismissal of that case with prejudice.
Commissioner Shipley, Mayor, uh, I'd like to second. This is Mayor Ananda. We had a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second by Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Ananda, aye. That passes unanimously with two commissioners, um, sitting out of that vote, commissioners, um, Commissioner Larson and Vice Mayor Finkeldein. The next item on our agenda is general public comment. Um, general public comment will be accepted in written form only. General public comments must be submitted 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting. Emails or mail are acceptable, and written comments can also be dropped in the utility billing Dropbox located at the cutout at Sixth Street in New Hampshire. All comments should be marked for the city commission. Um, to submit general public comment by email, ccagendas@lawrenceks.org, or mail, City Hall, 66th Street, Lawrence, Kansas, 66044. We did receive, um, two items of general public comment, one from Chris Flowers regarding concerns with city transparency regarding the police union negotiations, the chief's resignation and addresses over dispatch, and one from Nolan Clay Perry regarding the COVID-19 response, and those are available via the agenda online. The first agenda item on our regular agenda is to consider adopting Resolution Number 7330, authorizing the mayor to sign the Obama Foundation pledge committing the city to reviewing and is necessary revising the city's use of force policy. Do we have anyone speaking at that?
I'm, I apologize. Uh, this is City Manager Craig Owens. Um, we prepared this out of, uh, in response to, um, a previous meeting. Uh, it was one of the list of 12 items that the commission had asked us to bring forward.
Okay. So, um, in the executive summary, would commissioners be okay with me reading that aloud for those who might not have access to this information? At its June 16, 2020, regular meeting, the city commission discussed proposed actions related to social and racial equity in our community. One of the items of interest to the city commission is to consider authorizing the mayor to sign a pledge issued by the Obama Foundation, committing the city to review and is necessary revising the city's use of force policy as outlined below. One, review the Lawrence Police Department's use of force policies. Two, engage the community by including a diverse range of input, experiences, and stories in the review. Three, report the findings of the review to the community and seek feedback. And four, reform the city's police use of force policies. There's also, um, in that material, a link to that online pledge, um, and a resolution associated with that. Um, commissioners, do we have any questions before we check to see if there's any general public comment present regarding this item?
Commissioner Larson, I do have a question for, for Craig, I think, probably. So, um, is that one of these four items, uh, starts with a review of the police department's use of force. Do we have any, um, plans on what that's going to look, that review's going to look like and who's going to do it?
Uh, nothing specifically at this time. Uh, the police department has updated these, uh, policies recently, um, internally, but I, I believe the citizens', um, police, uh, review board is, uh, is having discussions related to that, and, um, the commission also is another one of those, uh, those items, uh, discussed, has asked that we start some community conversations. So, uh, I, I would expect that some of the policies and procedures related to, uh, the police department would be part of that discussion.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Ananda. Any other questions?
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, um, I appreciate that, Craig, but do we have a timeline? Do we want to set ourselves some parameters?
Uh, we, we haven't established any, uh, particular timeline. I believe that the citizens' police review board has met already and has started their work, um, and started to outline and kind of, uh, divide up the, the different pieces of the work that they'd like to do. I don't know that they've specifically set a, uh, a deadline for their review. As far as our review, um, I think we did put timeframes in there for when we were going to start, uh, uh, set up some of the community conversations, uh, and I want to say that was within six, thirty to sixty days, uh, last time. So I think those are two pieces that are more nebulous, uh, not specific to this pledge, uh, but certainly within the next six months, which is when all of this work, um, is, is expected to be, uh, moved forward, uh, we would, I'd expect that's when it would be done. We can also bring you or make presentations directly to the commission, uh, if you'd like, on some of these policies and procedures, or the ones that are specifically listed here, uh, in the Obama pledge. So we can certainly schedule that within a thirty-day timeframe. City Manager Craig Owens, sorry, I didn't say that. Kidding.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Shipley again. Um, maybe it doesn't need to be that formal, maybe just every couple weeks, and perhaps your manager's report could just give us an update on anything you know, just so we know the ball is continuing without us, even as much as the public understands that we haven't forgotten this, that it's being worked on every week, all the time.
City Manager Craig Owens, we can certainly commit to that.
Mayor, this is Diane Stoddard, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to comment that, uh, regarding the Community Police Review Board, the review board has set a ninety-day timeframe for a working group to come back, uh, and make recommendations related to the ordinance and the bylaws of that, of that board. Um, they have not set a specific, um, timeframe related to review of policies that would be under their purview.
This is Mayor Ananda. So maybe there's space then for, at their next meeting, updating them on the conversations that we've had and proposing, understanding that kind of check-in nature of this, um, bringing that back to us after they've had a chance to discuss it.
Yes, Diane Stoddard, Assistant City Manager. I do know that, uh, they're planning on talking about more work groups, um, and, and I would assume, uh, set timelines later at their meeting, later in the month. They do have a meeting on Thursday, uh, as well, but, uh, that meeting will be, um, mainly different agenda items. But, um, as they proceed, we'll, we'll certainly be forwarding the minutes of their meeting for you all to, um, keep, keep abreast of their actions, and we can also include a summary in the city manager's report.
Mayor Ananda, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, we had, um, two individuals who wished to give public comment on this item. First is Marla Jackson. Go ahead, you have three minutes. Do we have Marla Jackson on the Zoom?
Mayor, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. Um, she's actually here in person.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I am not that person.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you were saying.
No, I'm asking if I could give a public comment.
We'll get to the in-person public comment next. I-
I was trying to whisper to you, sorry.
Okay. Um, Marla's not here. This is Porter Arneal, and we did have somebody on the phone, but now I don't see that phone here anymore, so I don't know if that was her or not.
I'll come back to, to that individual once we've gone through the rest of public comment. The other individual who signed up to give public comment on this item is Chris Flowers. Please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, um, I'm Chris Flowers. Um, my thoughts are, I, I'm for this, but at some point, we, we need to do more in that we, we need more transparency in general. Like what, if, if we have rules about use of force, but cops can just turn off their cameras when they break the rules, what good does having the rules actually do? I, I think you also need to relook at the body camera policy and also our city, like, make, make it more accessible for our, our police review board to be able to look at cases. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mayor Ananda, thank you. Um, is there anyone in person who wishes to give public comment on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Hello, um-
You have three minutes.
Look at this camera, okay. My name is Victoria Kiss. I live at 435 North, uh, 1500 Road. I'm a little ways out of town, but I've called Lawrence my home for a while. Um, and this speaks to your number two, engage. Um, I know that there's a lot of people that won't have time to fill out your whole survey online. I've already checked it out a little bit. Um, but this is a petition and a letter to the Lawrence City Council. Um, "We, the undersigned, demand that the Lawrence City Commission adopt a city budget that prioritizes community well-being and redirects funding away from the police." As you know, in the, okay, I didn't double-check these numbers, and you please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it, in the 2019 budget, the City of Lawrence allocated an increase of over $2 million to fund the Lawrence Police Department. In the 2020 budget, the City of Lawrence increased the Police Department budget again, but by another two and a half million dollars this time, making the police budget an exorbitant thirty-three and a third of our city's total taxpayer-funded budget at over $27 million, when just a little over 1% of the budget is allocated to public health and 10% is allocated to, uh, services and operations. The Lawrence Community Shelter and vital community organizations like Just Foods and the Willow Domestic Violence Center, both of whom received only around $16,000 combined in the 2020 budget, have been underfunded long before the pandemic increased their usage. The city must recoup some of these badly-needed funds by decreasing the police budget by 50%. We demand that the city commission begin meaningfully defunding the LPD and reallocating those funds to programs proven to more effectively promote a safe and equitable community. We need funding for community-based mental health services, substance abuse treatment services, and affordable housing programs, and housing-first initiatives, not police. We love this community and want to see it flourish. We demand a budget that reflects the actual needs of Lawrence residents and works to improve the well-being of everyone who calls Lawrence home. We must take a hard look at what, at the way the current system fails to serve and, in fact, actively harms our community, and come together to reimagine the role of police in our community. We are urging you to completely revise the current budget and especially the 2021 budget, and to invest our taxpayer money back into the people and not into the police. We trust that you will do the right thing when we trusted, uh, to elect you to serve us, and this is a moment for you to step up and show Lawrence that you care for our community. And I want to thank you guys for, um-
Mayor.
-the progress that you have already made towards this goal. Um, but we just, um, we're asking for a significant cut in funding, and then we can just reallocate that lump sum between the services that you guys have already talked about in your last meeting, expanding.
Thank you.
And I have about seventy-five signatures here, and there will be more. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, sorry, Commissioner Shipley, I didn't hear how many signatures she said.
I have about, uh, seventy-five currently. This is only spending about four or five hours down on Mass Street, and if one of the staff members has information for me on how to make a petition official with you guys in, uh, the physical form, that would be great, because I want you guys to know that- -your community, and they are, um, your constituents and your community members. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will call again for Marla Jackson, if you're present, to give your public comment on this item, via phone or in person.
No one else is joined.
Um, we don't see her, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. I did resend her that, uh, the link, um, with the phone number and everything, but as yet I haven't seen her response, and she isn't back on.
Okay. Um, I would definitely encourage, this is Mayor Ananda, um, anyone who, who has difficulty connecting with us and wishes to give public comment, that always reaching out to the commissioners directly via email or phone is an option as well. Um, so I, I, at this point, we'll go ahead and bring it back up to the commission. Um, if, if Marla Jackson does, um, appear on the meeting in person or via phone prior to the time that we are finished discussing this item, I would be happy to hear that public comment on this item. Um, and if it's later than that, then at that point, we will, we will request direct contact via email or phone. Um, so we will bring this item back up to the commission. Um, again, our, our, our action tonight is to consider adopting Resolution 7330, authorizing the mayor to sign Obama Foundation pledge, committing the city to reviewing and is necessary revising the city's use of force policy. Are there, is there discussion?
Commissioner Larson, I just want to say one, one thing, and, um, you know, I appreciate that we're, um, looking at trying to move forward with this, um, signing this pledge. I do hope that this is, and I've asked this before, that this is just one part of us taking a top-to-bottom review of our police department, um, in an effort to, to see, to, um, evaluate, you know, all aspects of it. Um, I think it would just be healthy for both the police as well as our community to see, see that, and so I am hoping that other commissioners are, would be in favor of, of that type of review.
Mayor Ananda, this is Commissioner Shipley. I would like to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution 7330, authorizing the mayor to sign the Obama Foundation pledge, committing the city to reviewing and as necessary revising the city's use of force policy.
Is that a motion to adopt?
Uh, yes. Consider adopting, sorry, motion to adopt, I apologize.
Commissioner Larson, second.
This is Mayor Renanda, we have a motion from Commissioner.
Mr. Bulley, I didn't realize that the discussion was over. So I would like to make the point that I think it's very important that we rely on the Community Police Review Board as we go forward and look at, look at these kinds of policies. I think that if we don't empower them, then they will have a hard time functioning. And so we need to have them consider this and we need to rely on them. Otherwise, what's the point of having them? So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. This is Mayor Renanda, thank you, sort. Anyone else before we move to the vote? Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Shipley, a second from Commissioner Larson, is that correct? Did I remember that correctly? Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkelman, aye?
Aye.
Mayor Renanda, aye? That passes unanimously. Our second item on the agenda tonight is consider approving the design concept for 31-foot wide Collector Street with a 10-foot shared-use path on the south side and 5-foot sidewalk on the north side for 19th Street, Harbor to O'Connell, CIP, PW17E3.
Good evening. Dave Cronin, City Engineer. The East 19th Project has gone through a significant amount of public process here the past few years as we've looked at different concepts. At the request of the 19th Street Neighborhood Coalition and City Commission, BG Consultants completed a sixth concept that reviewed a street section, including a 22-foot wide street and open ditch storm sewer. And I have Jason Hoskinson with BG is going to go over a presentation with the details of this sixth concept and the comparison to the other concepts. And I'm going to turn it over to him here shortly. He just texted me a minute ago that his computer crashed and he's trying to restart. And he was in the meeting and I think he's, should be rejoining here shortly. But I will go ahead and see if I can pull up the presentation and share my screen here. Well, while we're waiting for Jason, I'll go ahead and start going through some of the slides here. So hopefully you can see this. This is the corridor of the project on East 19th Street from Haskell to O'Connell. And Jason just texted me that he's back. So Jason, just pulled up the presentation, but if you want to share your screen and go through this, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure thing. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for hanging with me there. I don't know what happened, but the computer crashed as I was getting ready. I'm going to share my screen and step through the presentation. So as Dave mentioned, we're going to talk about 19th Street improvements tonight. We're going to try to jump through this fairly quickly so we can get to any kind of discussions and question answer that the commission may have of us. The 19th Street corridor overall, the project includes a number of improvements from Haskell all the way to O'Connell, including waterline, traffic calming devices, sidewalk gap closures, and a number of other improvements. Tonight, the focus of our conversation though is going to be on this eastern half, rebuilding 19th Street between Harper and O'Connell Road and what that, what that wants to look like. So just as a quick refresher, this is a snapshot of 19th Street looking west. You can see that it's a non-standard roadway, has no curb and gutter, little to no ditches. The pavement is beyond its service life, limited and disconnected sidewalks, and there are no bicycle facilities in, in this particular half-mile corridor. So BG Consultants was retained and we were tasked with evaluating a number of concept designs that could work for this particular corridor. We started, we started in with Concepts 1 through 5, had a number of public involvement meetings with the MMTC and also presented some findings to the City Commission late last year. At the direction of the commission, we then included some additional evaluations on a non-standard or narrower 22-foot wide street, that's the concept number six, a narrower street with open ditches through the corridor. We then presented that to the Multimodal Transportation Commission in June and had a pretty good discussion about that. I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. And out of that, we had two kind of what I'll call final concept design considerations that we'll talk about here later tonight. So these next handful of slides are pretty much direct from what we discussed at the MMTC. So I'm going to keep it kind of higher level, but provide some information about the concepts we evaluated. The, these are elevation sketches or cross-sectional sketches of what the six concepts could look like. Concept 1 being the top left, Concept 2, 3, 4, 5, and so on. The concepts range from Concept 1 being essentially the identical cross-section to Venture Park, or excuse me, O'Connell Road through Venture Park. Concept 2 through 5 included a number of curb and gutter, city-standard collector-style streets with varying infrastructure for handling bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. The last concept, Concept 6, highlighted in the red box, is the open ditch cross-section that we looked at. We looked at carrying stormwater flow in open ditches along the side of the road, complying with the city's stormwater management criteria. And there's a number of dimensions in here. We can certainly get into some of that discussion if you'd like, but we had a good conversation at the MMTC meeting about the impacts of open ditches and designing, although the street itself is narrower, by the time you add in recoverable safe slopes and meet the engineering design criteria, your footprint actually gets quite large with an open ditch cross-section. This is kind of the plan-view over map of that concept design for Concept 6. Here we've got Harper Street on the left, top-left, the west end of the project, and then the rebuild going east. Matchline jumps down to the bottom half and continues over to Venture Park. We've got the 22-foot wide street shown. The orange hatching would represent sidewalks and shared-use paths for alternate modes of travel. The blue represents the ditch bottom of our concept ditch design of what an open ditch, more of a rural cross-section could look like in an urban environment. And then the greens just simply entrance pipes or storm sewer pipes. One of the issue, well, a couple of issues we found with this and discussed with the Neighborhood Coalition and the MMTC was the impacts to utilities. The magenta stars are major transmission lines for Evergy through the area. And in this scenario, pretty much every pole was in the way and was going to have to be relocated, which was going to potentially delay some of the project progression, add some costs to the utilities in the area. And then in this scenario, we also discussed with fire, fire and medical about the red areas here being typical bumpouts, if you will, on the corridor. The minimum width that the fire department was resting was 26 feet if fire hydrants were the street width. So going with a narrower street would require every few hundred feet, 300 or 400 feet, to bump out with some pavement here for fire and medical needs. So that was a, an overview of what we discussed with the MMTC. This table of pros and cons, there's a lot of information here. I'm not going to go through each and every one of them for you tonight, but this is similar to what was presented to the City Commission last time, with the exception of we've added the column for Concept 6. And it does a good job of trying to summarize the evaluation in relation to how, how well it performs in different categories of infrastructure demands. So our focus at the MMTC meeting in June was comparing, of course, open ditch section with more urban environments, with curb and gutters and storm sewers. One of the conversations was about how we handle drainage and infiltration and whether an open ditch section would better accommodate that. In the timeframe of presenting to the City Commission last time and then getting to the MMTC meeting in June, the geologist had performed some evaluations on the soils out there, found the existing soils are fat clays. And if you read that second bullet point under there, you can see that basically the characteristics of fat clays are not good for pavements. It's not good to build a road on those existing soils. Unfortunately, that's the predominant soil here in Lawrence and this region of Kansas, so it's not good for drainage. And that's where an urban footprint with curb and gutters and storm sewers comes into play. We can get that water off the street, put it in a pipe and carry it away from the street without jeopardizing the pavement infrastructure investment. And we can do that with a minimal footprint. Now, that's not to say we can't do that with an open ditch section. We can, but it requires deeper ditches and those ditches get farther out, which increases the footprint of the overall project. So we did talk a little bit about that at the MMTC meeting as well and tried to include some basis of information here for you tonight. The existing corridor, the right-of-way kind of varies through there. It is a pretty much a developed corridor though, so the bigger the footprint, the farther out into the properties we get, the more impacts we have on fencing, parking lots, utilities, you name it. So if we can recommend or pursue an improvement that maintains a smaller footprint, like an urban cross-section with a curb and gutter does, we can actually cut down on some of those real estate acquisition costs. This was an example of the footprint of Concept 4 being the 31-foot Collector Street versus the footprint of Concept 6 being 22-foot street with open ditches. The construction limits of the two were estimated based on the concept designs. And you can see the red representing the urban cross-section, the blue being the bare footprint. It's farther out into, right here would be the Douglas County Fairgrounds, but on the north side, you can see we're approaching houses on the north, fences. And then as we go closer to Venture Park, it's getting into parking lots. And all of that is a cost that the city would, would have to bear in implementing the project. So we had some really good discussion at the June meeting. The general feedback that we received, the staff received from that discussion was that a curb and gutter street with a storm sewer is important for a number of reasons. There was a lot of discussion on bike head accommodations and the Neighborhood Coalition, MMTC, and staff really felt that, you know, a 10-foot shared-use path on the south side of 19th Street would be sufficient in trying to carry both pedestrians and bicycle traffic in the area, meet the demands that we expect in the future. But the street width kind of remained a large topic of discussion. Out of that meeting, and I'm sure you saw in the agenda statement, the MMTC recommendation to the City Commission was to pursue a 27-foot curb and gutter street, that 27-foot being the back dimensions, back of curb to back of curb, with a shared-use path on the south and the sidewalk. The recommendations are similar, but with a 31-foot standard Collector Street, a city standard Collector Street with the shared-use path and the sidewalk. This table just, it kind of breaks down the cost figures that you probably saw in your agenda statement tonight. Construction costs, property acquisition costs, obviously the smaller the footprint, the less acquisition cost we have. And then the third, or yes, excuse me, the third row there was construction cost inflation due to potential utility relocations. Evergy's estimating about two years' worth of design and relocation to relocate those major transmission poles. So it certainly has maybe not a direct cost on the city upfront, but delays to the project could reveal costs on the back end due to inflation. So staff's recommendation and our recommendation is to pursue the design of a 31-foot curb and gutter, standard Collector Street with the shared-use path on the south, 5-foot sidewalk on the north. There's a number of reasons that I've got bullet points listed there as to why we're making that recommendation, but we feel that's an appropriate cross-section for this particular section of 19th Street. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dave if you have any further comments. Otherwise, I'll be here to try to address any questions the commission may have of us.
Mayor Renanda, thank you. Was there anything else to add before we open it up to questions for the commissioners?
I would just say that, you know, we do, the staff recommendation is to meet the city's minimum standards for a Collector Street. East 19th Street is designated as a Collector Street in our transportation plan. It was downgraded from a minor arterial in 2018 with the revision of our transportation plan. And that came out of input and public involvement and review by staff to downgrade it. And so the 31-foot wide street that staff recommends is also consistent with the typical width of 19th Street from Massachusetts to Harper, and it would provide a uniform street width for 19th Street. So it's my professional opinion that the Collector Street designation and width is appropriate on 19th Street to serve all users of the road and including accommodating emergency access for fire and police and future transit service. So, you know, staff tonight is seeking direction from the City Commission on selecting a concept and street width so that we can identify the location to construct a new waterline this year, which is in the budget, and then proceed with final design plans in anticipation of reconstructing the street in 2021. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Mayor Renanda, thank you. Are there any questions for commissioners, for staff? Courtney?
Thanks, Mayor. Commissioner Shipley, Dave, you said the, it would be consistent with the width of 19th, but that's not the width of 19th from, say, Barker to Iowa, is it? So you would actually still have two different widths on 19th, right?
Commissioner Shipley, this is Dave Cronin, City Engineer. West of Massachusetts Street, the width does fluctuate and it, to different widths. When you get closer to Naismith and west of Naismith, it is wider than 31 feet. We included a center turn lane through there for safety. There's a little bit higher traffic volume through there, but in comparison to the adjacent section of 19th Street between Mass and Harper, which is, you know, through the neighborhood there, it would be the same street width. So it is, there is some variation if you continue on to the west.
Commissioner Larson, I have a question for you, Dave. So the 31-foot design from Mass east towards Harper Street for East 19th Street. So the 31-foot design from Mass east towards Harper Street, or East 19th Street, that street also has bike lanes on both sides, is that correct?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, that is correct.
So that 31 feet, does that include the width of those bike, on-street bike paths or not?
The, Dave Cronin, city engineer, the width does include the bike lanes, so it's, the width of the street is the back of curb to back of curb.
Okay. So Commissioner Larson, so how wide are those bike lanes on that stretch?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, the bike lanes are five feet, and the through lanes are 10 feet. So the, if you're measuring from the face of curb to face of curb, it's roughly 30 feet, which we have two 10-foot through lanes and two 5-foot bike lanes. Those were installed a few years ago. It was well after the street was built, but just to accommodate some space, it was not preferred, but better than, better than nothing.
Yeah. So Commissioner Larson, so the actual width of the driving lanes that's being proposed or that was approved by the Transportation Board, those are actually wider than what is the driving lanes west of Harper? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, the driving lanes would be wider without bike lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
Please go ahead. Sorry.
When were the standards, the minimum city standards for collector streets adopted?
The minimum standards have been that way as long as I've been around, which has been since at least 2007. We did do a major overhaul of our standards in 2016, but didn't change the typical street width of residential or collector streets. And so I don't, I don't know how long previous to 2007 that they've been 31 feet for a collector street, but...
Okay. So this is Commissioner Bowley again. If you don't know when they were done, then you're very likely not going to be able to answer my next question, which is, what was the process by which the standards were developed?
Well, I can't answer, Dave Cronin, city engineer, I can't answer the specifics of when it was developed, but we do review our standards annually and make changes based off of feedback we receive from consultants in the development community. And so, yeah, it, you know, I don't know the details of why we ended up with what we did, but it's a pretty typical street standard or street width for a collector street in comparison to other communities, if not a little smaller or a little narrower. But that's all the, I guess, information I have on the history.
This is Commissioner Bowley again. Do you, can you tell me what the process for adopting the standards is? Is it in action by the commission or is it something else?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, the standards are not adopted by the city commission. They are resources that are reviewed and, you know, they're on our department webpage, and we use them, you know, staff uses those to apply to public and private development of public improvement plans, but they are not adopted by the city commission.
This is Commissioner Bowley, thank you.
Mayor Nanda, any other questions before we open it up to public comment? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I don't know. Okay. Tell me if you don't want to talk about this now, we'll talk about it later. But I did notice in the MMTC, that the initials for it now, multimodal, there was no discussion as there had been in the past about whether to open O'Connell at all. I think it was mentioned one time by Chris, fire chief, other fire chief. And I don't know where that discussion went. I don't recall that being particularly resolved at any of the commission meetings. Can you remind me when that was resolved?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, just to clarify your question, you're saying two-way access at O'Connell?
This is Commissioner Shipley, yes, thank you.
Okay. You know, we have discussed the need to maintain two-way access at O'Connell throughout the process and public process of looking at these different concept options. 19th Street is a collector street. It is a street you would expect for residential streets to connect to and then to connect, make connections to business and commercial nodes. And so on collector streets, we don't recommend limiting access. And so we, you know, we did discuss that a lot a couple of years ago when we began discussing this project, the need to maintain two-way access. I don't think we got into it a whole lot of detail again at the June meeting, but, you know, staff still would recommend maintaining two-way access to Venture Park there at O'Connell Road with the design of the project.
Mayor Nanda, any other questions before we have public comment? Okay, we have two individuals signed up for a public comment on this item. The first is Michael Allman. You have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
And I apologize, I don't have a camera on my computer. One thing that staff didn't mention in their presentation was that the coalition, in the interest of frugal budgeting, we have conceded the open ditch question, that we don't, we are not interested in the open ditches anymore. And you notice that the sixth option, the 22-foot wide option, actually is cheapest option. So having said that, you hopefully read my letter and you've seen our position that we would like to have a 22-foot wide curb and gutter street that mirrors the 22-foot wide travel lanes west of Harper Street, the cross section that would have intervals about 400 to 500 square feet, and then every section then would be interspersed with fire truck turnouts that would be approximately 75 to 100 feet long. We would like three or four raised crosswalks, and like I said, that would be the cheapest option, at least $247,000 cheaper than a 31-foot option. You're probably aware, I've been advocating for progressive improvement for some time on issues that many people have not yet been aware of, like natural landscaping and bike ways and climate protection. Quite frequently, I've been asked a question by city manager or planning director or public works, where is the constituency for this? They all say they'd be interested if I can show them a constituency for my issue. Well, tonight, we're considering taking a 22-foot wide residential street, 19th, east of Harper, and rebuilding it possibly at 22 feet, which is our preferred option, the same width as the 22-foot wide travel lanes west of Harper. To safely accommodate fire trucks, the pavement would widen to 26 feet at the fire hydrant locations every 400 feet or so. You might wonder, how is this justified? And where's the constituency for the 22-foot wide street? It's the 19th Street Neighborhoods Coalition of Barker, Brook Creek, Centennial, Kennedy, Schwegler, and University Place Neighborhoods. When we formed in 2016, four of those neighborhoods actually voted as neighborhoods. We have consistently said we want East 19th rebuilt at 22 feet wide and remove its collector designation in favor of a local designation. And that's not all. The Multimodal Transportation Commission has been clear that widths of 31 feet or wider are too wide in their opinion. Three of those commissioners voted for a 22-foot width, five of them for a 26-foot width. So I ask now, where is the constituency for a 31-foot wide street? It's simply Mr. Cronin alone. He's chosen the design standards on his own. The Transportation Commission discussion just last night was considering narrower street standards. Mr. Cronin acknowledged that Ashto doesn't specify widths, that it's up to the city to choose that width. Mr. Cronin has chosen 31 feet as his standard, but it's not chosen by the commission, as you pointed out. Regarding that 22-foot configuration that would...
Mike, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay.
We'd like the 22-foot wide width. Thank you.
The second person that we have signed up for a public comment on this item is Chris Flowers.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I have a couple thoughts, I guess. I was reading through some of the comments, and some people, it seems, don't, don't think that our, our city staff necessarily listens to public input and this, these, these opportunities where, where the public has a chance to engage with the city staff, that it's just cities, it's just kind of a, not, it's not real. Like, the staff's just there, it's not for them to hear what your opinion is, it's more that they want to, to push their opinion on you. So I'm kind of skeptical about the city engineers. But at the same time, as a delivery driver, 19th east of Harper, that, that road's narrow. Like, I would not, if it's a, and it should be a collector street, like, if we're going to be extending it out in other streets, like, if, if I have a delivery to out east, I want a road that's wide enough. Like, I don't think what, what currently is east of 19th, I don't think that road is wide enough to be a collector street. So I'm kind of torn. And also, I was just wondering, I don't think we should be even, even be doing this right now. I think we've already put in the bike, we're putting in the bike boulevard, and I think that's going to increase the traffic on 19th. So to have another project that's probably going to increase traffic on 19th, maybe it won't. Do we know what, do we have any projections on how much traffic on 19th connecting it to O'Connell will, will produce? I, I think it will produce some, and I'm, I know the bike boulevard's going to produce more traffic on 19th. So before we do this project, I think we should wait and see what the congestion is that's caused by the 21st Street bike boulevard line. Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Okay, is there anybody publicly present who would like to speak to this item?
Mayor, this is Porter O'Neill. There's nobody present in the room, but Nick Kuzmiak is here via Zoom, and he'd like to offer public comment on this.
This is Mayor Nanda. Sherry, I wanted to check in with you on that. We have historically had folks sign up or be present.
That, Sherry Redeman, city clerk, that is correct, but we also want to encourage people to attend via Zoom rather than showing up in person, so we have been pretty flexible on that. So I would recommend we go ahead and let him speak on this item, based on how we treated other individuals.
Thank you, yes, I agree. Please go ahead, Nick.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners and staff. I appreciate you making this last minute change. I've actually been on the road, I just got back in, and I realized I did not follow this agenda nearly as well as I thought I did. So anyway, I got three minutes. The three things I was going to explain were, oh, first of all, I am the current chair of the Multimodal Transportation Commission. I'm speaking basically to try to summarize what our thoughts were and what our discussion was. So you can hopefully have the best information that you can to make your decision. So the three things I wanted to bring up were an explanation of the multimodal vote, the comparison of our recommendation to the staff recommendation, and finally, the rationale for narrow streets. So starting with the explanation of the MMTC vote, I would like to note that it was six to three. Everybody voted for a street that was 27 feet or less. Three dissenting votes were for the 22-foot street. I was among them, so I might be a little biased, but we, we did all vote for a modification of option six, I believe it was. So the ones who voted for 27-foot instead of 22-foot street width were basically personally or physically uncomfortable with driving that small of a street and out of consideration for the fire department and emergency services. As a comparison of our recommendation to staff recommendations, I would note that, you know, for example, it says, the 31-foot street says it's effective stormwater management to protect infrastructure investments. A four-foot narrower street is less stormwater to have to deal with. Reasonable separation of facilities for different transportation modes also achieved by our recommendation. Shared use path also in our recommendation. Smaller project impact, actually, the 27-foot is a smaller project impact. Less impact on adjacent private infrastructure, basically the exact same. Low utility relocation costs, same. Total project cost considerations, the staff recommendation is actually the highest cost option, just for your information. And finally, the efficient ongoing maintenance efforts, once again, a four-foot wider street, that is four extra feet per linear foot of pavement that you have to eventually take care of. Less pavement equals less maintenance. Finally, the point I would like to bring up is the rationale for narrow streets. You have recently adopted Plan 2040, which is a vision for the future of Lawrence, and among that, among its many chapters are safe and welcoming neighborhoods, how we want to get back to walkable, healthy neighborhoods that people can really feel comfortable living in. Narrow streets get you there. There's a reason that people drive slower on narrow streets. They're physically uncomfortable to drive any faster on. As Mr. Flowers was just saying, it's kind of uncomfortable to drive a delivery truck fast down an 11-foot wide lane. There's a good reason that highway lanes are 12 to 14 feet. A 31-foot wide street curb to curb means you have 15-foot wide lanes. That is larger than the American Association of Highway Traffic, I don't know the exact abbreviation, but that's larger than the recommendations for interstate highways. That's a huge lane. So hopefully those will factor into your considerations. I do think that staff is doing a great job of upholding the standards to keep things consistent and safe, but I do think there is reason to maybe consider context sensitivity in this case. Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you, Nick. All right. We will bring this back up to the commission then for discussion. This is Mayor Nanda. I guess I have kind of a quick question around particularly what Lisa was talking, or Commissioner Larson was talking about when we were asking questions regarding the bike lanes and the recommended width, or having consistency in the widths of streets and having bike lanes versus not having bike lanes, and the impact of that. Is there any consideration of varying those standard widths if we have a separate bike path versus painted-on bike paths on this collector streets?
Dave Cronin, city engineer, there's nothing that we've considered in the past with reducing the street width if the bike lanes were not included. We do have a collector street standard minimum width of 36 feet for on-street bike lanes, which would be two 11-foot lanes and then two 5-foot bike lanes. I would say that typically on a collector street, parking is allowed, which if you do allow parking on one side of a collector street, it would narrow the width, so that may play into, you know, past consideration for the minimum width. But, yeah, to, you know, back to your question, we have not reduced the street width if bike lanes were not included.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think that seems relatively compelling to at least consider the width of those lanes and the necessity of the width of those lanes in that equation. Is there any thought around whether or not there would be parking on that road, particularly, you know, thinking about, I, I lived at essentially 19th and Maple for more than a decade, so I feel, feel pretty familiar with that area. Thinking around like the county fair or, you know, other events that occur at the fairgrounds, is there thought around parking availability on that road, or would that be disallowed?
Uh, Dave Cronin, City Engineer. With a street width of 31 feet, you would have the ability to provide on-street parking, um, at least on one side of the street. With a narrower street, you, you may not be able to, to do that. On residential streets, it is common, a residential street is 27-foot back-to-back, which was the MMTC recommendation. It is common to have, uh, you know, still have on-street parking with that width, but you don't have the, the, the traffic volumes that you do on a residential street, uh, you know, on a collector's street. And so it makes it, um, you know, less safe to have on-street parking with narrower, uh, roadway widths.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. In that vein, if you don't mind, Mayor, to follow up on your question, I hate to ask you, Dave, um, is, um, Lawrence Avenue between 6th and Harvard, uh, the same width we're talking about, 31 feet, it has parking? I'm just trying to visualize another street that's similar, um, because the pro, the parking there is kind of problematic. So I just wanted, sorry to follow up on the mayor's question.
Uh, Dave Cronin, City Engineer. I do not have that, uh, width at my fingertips. I would tend to think that it is closer to 31-foot, but I, I can't confirm that. A lot of our collector's streets are 31 feet or wider, um, but I can't answer the Lawrence Avenue without looking it up.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, Dave.
So Commissioner Larson here, so talking about the parking that's allowed on collector's streets, but there's no parking allowed on 19th Street from, at least from Mass to Harper, is that correct?
Dave Cronin, City Engineer. That is correct. Um, with, with the bike lanes that were added, um, there's not enough room to also include on-street parking. And that's been around for a while, so I don't have the details of that decision when that was changed. It was likely, um, you know, parking was removed, uh, the ability to park on the street when they added the bike lanes, but, um, that is correct. There was no parking.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. Um, I, I got a list of stuff here, I'm not sure where to start, um, but I think what I want to talk about, um, that other commissioners might not, is, um, Dave was saying that you want to keep, um, collectors open and not restricted, but I think Ozdale is a collector, and we specifically restricted people recently, the last few years, from driving on campus to 23rd Street. That was done specifically. And then recently, we lowered the speed limit again to, uh, get people to drive slower in that instance because of the proximity to the new bike boulevard. So, I, again, I'm just looking for consistency here. I feel like there are things, um, happening in different neighborhoods that restrict it, and for some reason, we're asking for it to be opened up here. Um, and one of my concerns, sorry to say a bunch of stuff but not ask a question, um, I know in the past, there was kind of a memo saying, um, you know, we'll make sure that trucks from MSO, um, once they get moved to the new site, won't be driving on this street, but I think that's still a legitimate concern, um, opening that much traffic into what is a neighborhood. I think we all acknowledge that 19th Street is a neighborhood street. So I, I'm just looking for consistency. Can you help me find that in this recommendation?
Um, Dave Cronin, City Engineer. As far as consist, consistency goes, recent, um, collector's streets that we've constructed, the most recent one, um, is out west off of, um, uh, six, northwest of 6th and George Williams Way, uh, adjacent to the new LMH project. I think it's Mercado Lane, that was a 31-foot street back-to-back, that's a, a collector's street, um, as is, uh, Overland Drive there in the northwest part of town. Other similar collectors that, that, you know, come to mind are Harvard Street as we, uh, Harvard Street, as we've extended that west, it's been 31-foot, um, if not maybe a little wider. Don't have all of the dimensions with me, but, um, I don't think it's narrower than 31. So, um, you know, as, in my experience, that's the, you know, we have applied that standard of 31 feet, and that's also why we're recommending it tonight, because it is the standard, and we, uh, expect, uh, that our development community to follow our standards when we do, uh, reconstruct, uh, construct new streets. And so, um, that's been the typical, uh, minimum width that we've used in the recent, uh, past.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd like to request a clarification from staff on the Ozdale stretch between 19th and 21st. It's my understanding that that is not a collector, but I would appreciate, uh, you know, clarification from staff on that point.
Dave Cronin, City Engineer. I'm going to confirm that here. Give me one second. So Oz, yeah, Ozdale from 19th Street to 23rd Street is a collector's street on our major thoroughfare's plan.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Nanda. I think that, you know, again, I'll mention that the bike lane conversation is fairly compelling for me to consider the 27-foot wide, is that correct? Um, that wasn't presented to us but was approved. Just considering that, that is 10-feet difference in the necessity for those widths, I think that the infrequency with which the fairgrounds are used, and acknowledging that it's very rare, except during the fair, that those, those lots are overflowing, um, that that would be sufficient if there wasn't parking on that street. But I'm, I'm curious about other commissioners' conversation around this. I, um, you know, having lived there and being part, a significant part of the community that is impacted by this directly, um, but is not part of a neighborhood association, um, I, I feel differently about opening it than those associations did, and, um, I think that this will significantly improve safety, um, for, for folks who are accessing it, including my 10 and 13-year-old who still visit there every other week. And so I'm curious what other commissioners' thoughts are on that.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner, sorry, Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. Yeah, so that's where I'm, that's one of the places I'm at. One of the very first things I learned, um, becoming engaged with the city was from Dave Cronin, who taught me in the course of the castle construction, that you build the street the way you want people to drive. So if you want people to drive slowly, you make narrower lanes. And so that's why, you know, maybe 22, um, is very narrow, um, but I, I think that what that does is cause safety. That causes people to slow down. Um, and I, I, as far as I can tell, that's been the conventional wisdom for several years now. That's the movement we've been going to. That's one of the comments I think Nick Kuzmiak made about making it narrow slows people down. So I, I am trying to reconcile this recommendation to make it 31, um, when 27 would be just enough. And I, I, I'm trying to give myself a reason to overbuild a road when we know people are gonna speed. It's 19th Street. They're gonna speed. So I don't think widening it makes it safer, is what I'm trying to say.
This is Vice Mayor Finkel. I would, um, a couple thoughts. I do think it makes a difference whether or not, you know, I mean, there's different types of collector's streets. I guess I'd say not all collector's streets are made the same. And, and I think, you know, one of the issues is, is whether or not you allow parking along those streets, because then you, of course, narrow those streets by, um, allowing the parking on either side. And certainly in, in certain subdivisions, um, you have, you have parking along those collector's streets, and in others you don't, at least one side of the streets. I, I would say that also this collector's street is not built the same as some, given, as you said, the current condition with the bike lanes, the, all of the driveways that open on east of, um, west of Harcourt. And so, um, you know, I know one of the questions, and I certainly want our city to be consistent, and I certainly appreciate, um, you know, Dave Cronin's issue when, you know, when he says to a developer out west, "I want to make a 27-street, 27-foot street because you let the people on the east side of town have a 27-foot street. What's the rationale to make me have a 31-foot street?" And so I can appreciate the, the position of the city being consistent with their application of collector's streets, and appreciate staff taking that position. In response, I'd say two things. One, um, I guess that's sometimes why the city commission is here, and I think different facts require different circumstances. So I think I will support, uh, the 27-foot, um, size of road, and, uh, you know, I think we want to think about whether or not we allow parking on that stretch when we get to that point. And then finally, I'd say, and this will come up some later when we're into the parking discussion or the, the, you know, I am generally in favor of, you know, less infrastructure to take care of going forward, and I certainly would be interested in looking at, um, evaluating smaller streets going forward across the city. You know, obviously, the cost is higher to build, the cost is higher to maintain, we have discussions about affordable housing, and the infrastructure that goes into those neighborhoods has, you know, a big effect here. Um, you know, you can see even on these, um, different costs, you know, the, the more streets a developer has to put in, the more infrastructure cost that goes to each lot, which makes it not as affordable. And two, we then take over the streets, and one day we have to replace them, and the cost to replace them is expensive. So, um, I do think to Dave's question of what do we say going forward, I'm certainly willing to have that discussion going forward about what our standards should be and when we should make exceptions, but given the history of this project and, and given where we're at and the Multimodo, Multimodal Commission's recommendation, um, I, I would support the, the 27, um, feet width.
Commissioner Larson here, so I just got a couple things, um, uh, as far as the minimum standard street size that Dave's talking about, you know, I do appreciate, like, Vice Mayor said, that, that, um, staff is trying to maintain, maintain a level of consistency. But we've, um, recently passed, passed, um, Plan 2040, which essentially is fundamentally changing how we look at how our city's gonna grow. And as part of that, it may be time for us to take a look at our standards. As David indicated, um, these street standards have been around since at least 2007, when he first came here. So this may be a good opportunity, that one size does not fit all across our community, um, with the idea that the emphasis is more on walkability, pedestrian safety, and, you know, biking. And so I, you know, I, I'm all for the idea of possibly reevaluating some of those standards. You know, I did find it interesting that the width, the actual driving width of that 26 or 27-foot lane, um, street of, of, of proposal was actually, um, more driving space than, um, west of Harper Street. So, so for that reason, you know, that reason as well as the idea that maybe we start looking at these standards a little bit differently, and not having a one-size-fits-all, um, you know, I can support the 27-foot one. And I could also, if there's any interest, to support the 22-foot one with the idea that there would not be ditches, um, because I do, don't like the idea of, of, the idea of, of that taking more, two more years. We've already put this off for a couple years. And that street condition there, I looked it up, and we're at 24.8 on the street condition, which is, is, um, way below the time where it needs to be reconstructed. And we recently had a community member come who lives in that neighborhood to us, to the city commission meeting, and was, um, provided us with her experience as to how bad it is to drive on that road. So I don't believe we can wait for two years for this, but I am interested, I can definitely support the 27-foot one, um, but I also could support the 22-foot one with, um, curb and gutters.
Mayor, can I clarify with Commissioner Larson, uh, this Commissioner Shipley? Would you keep the recommendation from multimodal on the, uh, single-use path and the multi-use path on the different-
Everything else, Commissioner Larson, everything else would, would remain the same, yeah, for sure. And well as with the bumpouts needed for fire.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Bowley. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the work that the, um, MMTC has done. I do have another question for staff. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong map, but I'm looking at the 2017 MPO-K dot FHWA roadway functional classification for Lawrence and Douglas County, and it does not show that Ozdale is a collector's street? Am I looking at the wrong map?
Dave Cronin, City Engineer. There, there are two maps. There's the FHWA Functional Classification Map, um, that, um, there's some, um, requirements for designating different amounts of streets in, in the community, a different percentage to arterials and collectors, and so there's a little different nomenclature than our, than the other map, which are, is our Major Thoroughfares Map. And that is the map that guides, um, uh, development and the classification, um, Lawrence. So, uh, on that map, uh, Ozdale is a collector's street.
So, so that, there's a difference between the two different classifications, and I'm getting an education out of this, and I appreciate it. So, yeah, I, I appreciate the work that, um, MMTC did on this, and, um, I would support their proposal.
Mayor, Sean Coffey, Fire Chief. May I make a comment?
This is Mayor Nanda, yes, thank you.
Fire Chief Sean Coffey. Mayor and Commissioners, I would like to, uh, support the staff's recommendation of the 31-foot, uh, collector's street, and I'll tell you why. You guys are very well aware, we drive very large apparatus, and they're about eight feet wide, and if we put out our outriggers on our ladder trucks, they go up to about 20 feet wide. So now you got 20 feet worth of width that's blocked off a street. We have to have collector's streets to allow us to get into the different neighborhoods within our community. And when you think about East 19th Street, I think about 1908 East 19th, where there are approximately about 200 homes or more out there in that neighborhood, that if that street is blocked off by one of our apparatuses or by an accident, we won't have access quickly into that neighborhood. By having the collector's street, that allows us to operate and move around town efficiently and effectively, because as we talked about, time is life, time is destroying a house fire, time is access to be able to get in and make a difference, maybe in, in life for individuals. So we do have to maintain a certain amount of collector's streets within our community to allow our apparatus to be able to operate. And when we talk about East 19th, west of, uh, Harper, it does have the bike lanes, but there's no parking on there, and that allows us to operate where we could get one truck by another. And so having two accesses to all these areas as much as possible helps all the community. We don't want to create a very long cul-de-sac where we have one blockage and we're unable to get in. And so collector's streets are very important for us, and having that standardized width to allow us to get through is very important. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Is there further discussion from the commission regarding that?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, I just wanted to add that on the parking situation. I definitely, you know, approving either the 27-foot or the 22-foot, um, we definitely want to see no parking allowed, even on the 31-foot, um, along that stretch, just like it is west of Harper Street. Um, and I realize that's a separate conversation, but, um, I think that would, would, would be a, a necessary aspect of, of this entire reconstruction on that, so.
Mayor, Commissioner Shively again. Since Chief Coffey's here, um, thank you. I, I do want to bring up again the point of opening up O'Connell and, and again, 19th Street is a neighborhood, it's several neighborhoods. And I, living on a very busy street, um, continue to be concerned about the addition of traffic, um, coming from the business park. Um, I know at one point, the idea was floated of having a one-way arm, uh, that only the police and firefighters would be able to use. That seemed to kind of fall by the wayside. Even though I know we purchased an arm for the police department, so I wondered if Chief could, um, talk to me about his proximity to the Venture Park and, and what I'm sure is, um, his strong feelings about, um, opening it up.
Well, as was mentioned earlier by staff, Sean Coffey, Fire Chief, the importance of two-way access into as many areas as possible, that gives us options. Even in our building plans, when we put in a new large building in a community, we have to create two access points depending upon the distance around the building. And, uh, Fire Marshal Division Chief Chris King can talk in more detail about that. I will tell you, as far as Venture Park for us, access to that for the fire department, we would not be using the 19th Street unless we, for some reason, unable to access it from 23rd Street. And the reason for that is by using 23rd Street, it has our GPS positioning devices on all the traffic signals. And so by doing that, we're able to change those lights and make access into that area quicker going down 23rd Street than we would by 19th Street. Because each time you come to a stop sign, we have to have a full stop before we proceed. And obviously getting a big truck moving kind of slows things down. So far as our access, primary access in the Venture Park, it'd be on 23rd Street. The secondary access would be if something happened and we were unable to get in, we could bring trucks in from 19th Street if we need to.
Mayor Nanda, are there any other discussion? Have we motioned? It sounds like there's consensus, um, primarily around the 27-foot with the other items remaining the same on the recommendation. Commissioner Shively, um, Mayor, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Larson, I, like you, would consider the 22-foot, um, is, do you feel any particular, um, uh, way that you feel that we could move any, any others forward on this, or do you feel like we're where we are?
Commissioner Larson, I, you know, I, I'm not, at this point, wanting to, to push it, um, but I'm just saying that if there are enough commissioners, I would be willing to support that. But I am definitely, um, committed to the 27-foot design. Definitely can move forward with that easily.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Based upon, um, you know, the recommendations and upon, um, what Chief Coffey just said, I, I could not support the 22-foot plan. Um, I'll, I'll support the 27-foot plan, you know, with a strong recommendation that we don't allow parking in there to give the, the fire department the most access possible. And I understand the Chief's point, um, on the preference of 31 feet, but I, I'm willing to go with the 27. Knowing also, by the way, that there's a second access through to that location from Venture Park as well.
I, I second that. I, I, I think that we have to make sure we don't have parking on, on the street.
Mayor Nanda, have we a motion?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Before I make the motion, what is the, um, I don't know, protocol, is that the right, right word about, um, talking about parking on that street? Should we leave that out of the motion and let that come in another way, or having it part of this motion is that your main?
Mr. Mayor Nanda, um, I don't know if Dave or Sheri would, probably Dave and then Sheri would be able to weigh in on that.
Uh, Dave Cronin, City Engineer. Uh, we would appreciate as much, uh, direction as possible. So I, I guess I would recommend the motion include the street width, the bike pit facilities, uh, for the, um, it sounds like the, everyone's in agreement of the sidewalk on the north side and the shared use path on the south side. And then, um, if you want to add in a recommendation, uh, uh, that we would include no parking on the street, that would be, um, good as well. I will say that, you know, when, when we do here begin actual design and pass this concept stage, we will come back with plans that show more details of, of crossings and street widths and, um, we can note that in the, in the plans too. But, um, I guess it wouldn't hurt to, uh, uh, put all of your intentions out, um, right now, if you could do that. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, with that, I would move for approval of the design concept for a 27-foot wide collector street with a 10-foot shared use path on the south side, a five-foot sidewalk on the north side, and no parking along the entire stretch of 19th Street, Harcourt to O'Connell.
Commissioner Larson's second.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, there was a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldai, a second from Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shively?
Nay.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes four to one with Commissioner Shively voting against. Item three on our agenda this evening is consider approving a text amendment TA 13-235 for Article 9 Parking, Loading, Access, and Land Development Code and associated sections of Article 5. Uh, use specific standards in 2017-01, general terms with recommended revisions based on comments received at the September 25th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting and provided as written communications from the MMTC. Consider adopting ordinances 9772, 9773, and 9774 on first reading.
Mary Miller, Planner. Um, good evening Commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a text amendment that completely restructures Article 9 and revises certain standards. This is related to the parking, loading, and access standards. This amendment will require revisions to other articles as well. Article 5, we will be changing or removing some parking requirements from the religious institution use, and we would be removing the accessory parking category as that would be discussed in Article 9. And also definitions will be added to Section 20-1701. The principal changes that are proposed with this amendment are listed in Attachment C that was provided with the staff report and the online agenda. There's also a staff memo that discussed the, um, Multimodal Transportation Commission comments and, uh, went over which comments resulted in changes to the amendment and which ones didn't. And so I'll go over the principal changes that are being proposed with this amendment now. Uh, one of the major changes is organization. This doesn't change the substance of the chapter, we're just arranging like items together. Uh, for instance, we're grouping all parking schedules in one section, all standards related to parking location are in another section. This is intended to increase the usability of the article. And we are also working to clarify certain provisions in the, um, parking chapter. Uh, since it was adopted in 2006, staff has identified certain provisions that are conflicting or a little bit unclear or confusing, and so we work to clarify those. And some of the major changes are the more substantial changes that we're recommending. Today in our parking chapter, we have a parking requirement. It is both a minimum and a maximum. Uh, we have the amount of parking you're required to have. If you want to have less, you need to get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. If you want to have more, you need to mitigate the effect of the additional impervious surface with stormwater best management practices. So what we're proposing is a range. Uh, so we still have the standard listed in the schedule, but you could provide between 90% and 110%. And so each business would have some flexibility, if they feel they need a little less or a little more parking, they could do that without a variance or needing to mitigate. At the Planning Commission meeting, a member of the public mentioned that this 90 to 110% range is not very effective for really small parking lots. If you have a 10 parking requirement, you're adding or reducing one parking space. And so the suggestion was made to perhaps have a tiered method of having a range. And that's what's being recommended today. So, uh, for instance, if you have a small parking requirement, up to 15 parking spaces, you would be able to provide between 90% to 150%. Uh, so if you were required to have 15 parking spaces, that means you could provide between 14 to 22 spaces without requiring a variance or mitigation. And if between 16 and 25 parking spaces required, that range would be changed to 90% to 120%. So for instance, if you're required to have 25 parking spaces, you could provide between 14 and 30 spaces. It just provides more flexibility for the, um, applicant. And then anything above 25 parking spaces would be that standard 90% to 110% that we were originally considering. Any reduction or increase beyond this range would require a variance. Today, someone can come in and request double the amount of parking that we note in our parking schedule, and with, uh, stormwater management mitigation, they're able to do that. Uh, with this change, increasing the amount of parking or decreasing beyond the range would require a variance on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And, uh, any increase above the range would still require that stormwater mitigation. Changes are being recommended to the bicycle parking standards. In the current code, the standards are fairly vague, and the dimensional requirements are actually included in the definition of bicycle parking. So we've created a section for bicycle parking standards. Currently, bike parking is required at a ratio of the amount of automobile parking that's required. So if you have a certain number of auto spaces, the bike parking is either one to four or one for every 10. And we're proposing a unique recommendation for bike parking for each use. And in addition, we're adding long-term bike parking. Um, we're try, trying to actually increase the amount of parking overall, we're trying to keep that relatively similar to what it is now, but some of the parking should be long-term, so employees or someone who's on the site all day might have more protected bike parking. And so the standards would be much more clear in, with the changes. Another change that we're recommending is that downtown parking would be required. Currently, development downtown is exempt from the requirement to provide parking. Uh, but our proposal is that if it was a development that meant a substantial development project, you would need to provide at least 50% of the required parking. So you still have an exemption. And a substantial project is one that increases the building size by more than 20%, increases the amount of impervious surface by more than 20%. Or you're developing a vacant lot. For instance, if you tore down a building and then rebuilt, that would be considered a major development project. Or you would, uh, the proposal is that they would provide 50% of the required parking or pay a fee, an in lieu of parking fee, that would be set by the city commission, and this would be placed into a parking fund so that the city could provide more parking spaces at a later date. And so that while adequate parking may be available for the downtown area today, this would work to can assure that parking would continue to be available as downtown suburb develops. We are proposing a change to how strip center parking is calculated. Uh, this does not apply to the outbuildings, but if you see some of the strip centers that have various tenants, today it's, uh, if the use changes, we need to verify the use in every tenant space and calculate the parking individually. And tenants change quite often, so this is very time-consuming. So the new requirement or the new calculation would be that you count it at one space for 300 square feet for all uses, except if it's a bar or a restaurant use. Uh, these are the most intensive uses and those would be calculated as noted in the parking schedule. This provides for flexibility while still ensuring adequate parking is provided. The shared or off-site parking has been clarified somewhat. Today, we have a shared parking table that, um, we have used several times and found that it actually only works if you're sharing residential and commercial parking together, which oftentimes is not very appropriate. It, it's not a very efficient or effective way to share parking. So we've removed that parking table, which we haven't found to be very functioning, and would just replace it with a requirement that if an applicant is proposing shared parking, that they would provide a parking study and analysis to justify the use of the shared parking. Another change is being provoked, proposed is to the surfacing of parking and driveway surfaces. Gravel is being removed as an acceptable surfacing material. We are adding porous pavement and ribbon drives, uh, with grass between the paved ribbons. Based on recommendations from the MSO engineers, the parking dimensions are proposed to be revised. Parking spaces would be widened from a minimum of eight and a half feet to nine feet wide. A one-way access aisle width would be increased from 12 feet to 14 feet. Standards for reverse angle parking would be added. And then just added a note regarding the minimum width for fire lanes, because the fire lane width would preclude whatever our minimum width is. So in some cases, we may say a one-way access aisle could be 14 feet, but if it's a fire lane, it would need to comply with fire code. Another change we're proposing would be to require a clear sight area for non-residential driveways, so that we can ensure sight visibility for people exiting those driveways. Uh, the number of curb cuts permitted on a local street would be revised from one per 200 linear feet to one per 100 linear feet, and this would just match other portions of the city code. And another change would be to prohibit stacked parking off of alleys in residential areas. And this is proposed in an attempt to balance the need for green space in a residential area with parking space. In staff's opinion, these changes will provide more flexibility to the parking requirements, provide better bicycle parking, and reorganize the article to make it more user-friendly. The revised dimensions address the larger vehicles which are in use today and are intended to provide safer parking areas. The Planning Commission voted seven to three to vote, to forward the recommendation to the city commission, and was a recommendation for approval at their May 27th meeting. And some of the commissioners who did not vote in favor supported some of the larger-scale changes proposed by the Multimodal Transportation Commission, such as the overall reduction or removal of minimum parking requirements. And, um, in staff's opinion, this change would require quite a bit of additional research and is beyond the scope of this text amendment, but it could be a follow-up text amendment at another time. In your agenda packet, they did have the Multimodal Transportation Commission comments and then the staff's memo discussing which changes were made and which ones were not made. Uh, this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mayor Nanda, thank you for that presentation. And are there any questions from Commissioners?
This is Vice-
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. Commissioner Larson here. Um, Mayor, you were talking about, um, no longer allowing gravel driveways and you mentioned something about a coarse, something a coarse type of gravel, type of driveway. Could you, could you go back to that and explain that again, please?
Yes, Mary Miller, Planner. I think I wasn't speaking very clearly, it's porous pavement.
Oh, porous, okay.
Right. So that, that, we currently use that, the stormwater engineer allows it, it's just not listed in our, in our chapter as a permitted, and so we got to encourage it, we would make sure it's listed.
Okay, porous, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, thank you.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Mayor, the, I think your recommendation for reducing or increasing the size of parking spaces is because those larger vehicles, is that the same reason for the 12-foot versus the 14-foot, um, one-way aisle that they're hard to back out of? Was there another rationale for that change?
Uh, Mary Miller, Planner. That change is pretty much based on the city engineer's recommendation. I do believe it's just because vehicles are larger and we want to make sure we have enough room for people to drive, while remembering that people are backing up into one-way traffic. As a rule, it's one-way because there's someone parked on it. And so making it wider would give those people a little bit of space to back up where they can see. And so that's one of the reasons for the wider width, but I believe that the, um, MSO And so that's one of the reasons for the wider width, but I believe that the MSO engineer felt that the wider width was needed because of the larger vehicles.
Commissioner Larsen here, I did have a question about the width from eight and a half to nine feet. Does that mean that current parking lots would have to be restripped?
No, this would only apply to new development. So anything that's striped as eight and a half feet could remain at eight and a half feet.
Okay, thank you.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein, follow-up on that question. Mary, what about a change in use or a, you know, if you had a retail use that changed hands, would that, and a new site plan was required, would that mean you'd have to restripe the parking lot?
Mary Miller, current planner. Actually, the way the site plan requirements go, if it's a minor change or a standard change, we only look at the code for whatever it is you're changing. So if you just change the use and you need to have eight new spaces, those spaces would have to be nine feet wide. If you were adding 200 square feet and you need one additional parking space, that one would need to be wider. If it's a major project, and by that definition of major, if it's 20% of a building enlargement or more than 20% impervious surface, or if it's industrial, that'd be 50%. But if you fall into the major category, then you have to come into full compliance with all city codes. And, you know, if the restriping would put them under their parking requirement, they may be able to request a waiver from the planning director. He has the authority to administratively waive requirements, or they could request a variance on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. I did watch the Planning Commission May 27 meeting today, and I seem to understand that they had wanted another meeting, a joint meeting perhaps, with multimodal and planning to discuss parking. I got a distinct impression from both parties, both bodies, that they wanted a lot more out of this, and they wanted to have a lot more conversation. Can you talk to me about that a little bit? I don't see that mentioned here.
Yeah, Mary Miller, current planner. I believe most of the discussion was about the changes that we did not make that the Multimodal Transportation Commission recommended, and some of the changes, as we mentioned at the meeting, we thought were just too large for the scope of this text amendment. You know, this has been in the works for years, and completely revising our minimum standards or removing parking standards, that's a very large change. And so if we were going to make a change like that, it'd be better to start a new amendment rather than to put this one on hold, because it would be probably a year or two to get everything worked out for that one.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. And if I may add to that, Commissioner, we are trying to work out the calendars between the Planning Commission and the Multimodal Transportation Commission to see if we can get a joint meeting scheduled. We just haven't had a lot of luck at this point in getting that to come online quite yet, but it is in the works.
Commissioner Shipley, then maybe this is a good question for Jeff or Mary, too. You don't feel like, as you say, the scope they're looking at was much broader, that this might be spending time on something that might be undone by future discussions that they have?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I think a lot of the amendment that is before you this evening corrects a lot of things that we've noticed in the code since its adoption. And this amendment's been in the works, I think, since about 2009, 2010. So there's been a lot of work that's been put into that, and we think it addresses a lot of those housekeeping items and gets a lot of those things fixed. There might be some parts that would be undone and then kind of adjusted as those discussions are ongoing, and that's perfectly good. But we think a lot of the amendment this evening is good, just to get the housekeeping cleaned up. It clarifies a lot of the language for both the staff and also our development community to know what the expectations and the standards are, and also just kind of reorganizes it so it's a much more approachable and efficient document. So I agree, I think there is probably a chance that some of this might get undone or come back in a different way based on those discussions, but I think the amendment going forward is also very good in its shape as of today.
Mayor Nanda, are there any other questions before we open it to public comment? Here we have one person signed up for public comment on this item, that is Chris Flowers. Please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers. I'm not real sure about what all this does, but one thing I just wanted to ask was just to make sure these new bike parking requirements, that the bike parking isn't actually taking up any car parking spaces. Also, I don't, this is, I don't think this is covered by it, but at some point, I would like to see a requirement, because like, there's an apartment complex I know of that it's like, it's pretty big, and they don't have any lines at all. And so I've been there and haven't been able to find a parking space, but I know there'd be more parking spaces available if they would have lines, like, painted for where to park, because if there's no lines at all, people just kind of park how they see fit, and then there seems to be wasted space. And then the, it takes up more parking on the street than, and that just seems kind of BS that there'd be more parking on the street if they would paint lines in their apartment complex for the people. And also, I just want to say that I want to make sure that we're not becoming more, like, putting the emphasis on biking, because I'm against that. I think most people here prefer driving in cars. And the, I think it was said earlier, you build streets on how you want the people to drive, which I disagree. I say you build the streets for how people want to drive. And people in Lawrence, they want to drive cars, this pushing the bikes on us, I don't like that. I'm all for the, like, making things more bike-friendly, but I'm against taking away from drivers to accommodate the bikers. Thank you.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Porter, is there anybody present for public comment on this item?
Mayor, this is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. There is not anyone in this room, and I apologize to be doing this again, but we did have someone sign up for this. My understanding was they were on the line to answer questions, but they were actually, had reached out to a planner to provide comment. So they were not on the list, but they will be making public comment on this item.
Okay, who is that individual?
It's Nick Kuzmiak.
Okay, go ahead, Nick.
Hey, sorry about that, everybody. I was obviously not very clear in signing up for this, so that's on me. Okay, once again, Nick Kuzmiak, Chair of Multimodal Transportation Commission. So first, I want to say thank you to staff and Planning Commission for looping in MMTC. Since parking policy does affect transportation, we believe that that was a pretty good fit for our scope of work. We did have multiple committee sessions and discussions with the full commission to prepare and agree on our position. Our overall comments, as you probably saw in the attachment, were basically regarding Plan 2040 and how the proposed changes align with that plan. Some of the new and modified standards are actually quite well-aligned, especially the ones around bike parking. As an occasional cyclist myself, it's really good to have some dimensional standards for developers. However, we believe that others were not necessarily in the spirit of Plan 2040, and that's really the bulk of our comments. So, for example, some requirements can make it pretty difficult to do infill development and maintain it of Plan 2040. Others would be an issue for small businesses to expand, especially downtown, again, pretty big in Plan 2040. And larger parking lot dimensions are not really necessary, but will create larger parking lots, which is, that has implications for stormwater collection and for walkability. So this is kind of a crude argument, but arguments around large cars are maybe a bit misdirected. It's kind of like curing obesity by buying bigger pants. So anyway, I would definitely encourage you to read our comments for some more examples. We get pretty into the weeds here. In general, I think that the disconnect between MMTC and Planning Commission and staff is that, basically, MMTC was looking at this with really fresh eyes. We were not involved in a multi-year process to go over this, so we had just been subject to looking at all the Plan 2040 discussions and kind of framing it in that context, whereas I think a lot of these standards may have come into play before that was adopted. So I can understand why there was a disconnect there. I also believe that having it on their agenda near midnight probably made the Planning Commission a little bit less interested in this particular topic. I should note that only some commissioners have raised the prospect of eliminating parking minimums altogether, especially after noting how many of the regulations are only necessary because of minimum parking regulations. I should note that we did not actually recommend changing it in this text amendment, only that we consider it going forward. It is a trend in other cities of varying sizes, and it does have huge implications on walkability, affordable housing, and stormwater mitigation, all of which, as far as I'm aware, are community priorities. So I'm here for any questions and clarifications, and once again, thanks for the last-minute edition here.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. We will now bring it back up to the commission for discussion.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. Yeah, those were exactly some of the concerns I had in listening to their conversations that, that they had expected a much larger discussion. And I did also kind of get the sense that maybe planning didn't get into the weeds, so to say, like MMTC did. I just, I feel like I would like to hear what they come up with. They're, both as deliberative bodies are really fantastic, they have great ideas, they're great problem solvers. I just, honestly, I would just love to give them a chance to flesh this out better and give us some more direction that adheres better to the aspirations we have consistently shown with Plan 2040 and transportation. So I guess what I would like to see is an extension on their deliberative abilities.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I agree with quite a bit of what Commissioner Shipley just said, although I also agree with Jeff that I think we need to get some of these amendments passed, clean this up, get it reorganized, and I think, and then direct staff to do, and those commissions to do additional work. I would have about five things, many consistent with what the multimodal group talked about, that I would take out of this amendment and leave for future discussion, but then allow us to go ahead with the rest of these amendments that allow us to clean it up, reorganize it, make it easier for people to use. That would be my recommendation. Then leave these five issues and some of the bigger discussions for ongoing discussion. But I am afraid if we hold this up, you know, we'll be, we'll miss a lot of good things that these changes make.
This is Mayor Nanda, I'm amenable to that suggestion.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Just to be clear, I guess, you know, the ones I would take out of this amendment, because I do think, once we have the larger discussion, we don't want to go backwards on some of these issues. I, as I said earlier, I do support ultimate changes to the code that reduce parking. I think we have too much parking in many of our, in particular, commercial and industrial spaces, and I do think we want to look at that as an overall discussion with Plan 2040 and probably come up with new parking regulations that reduce the required parking in many of those areas. I know the Oryad neighborhood would have a concern about that, we'll talk about that later, but again, not every place, but at least a significant discussion. So the ones I would change is, I would, at this point, I would leave the parking spaces at the eight and a half feet, the aisle widths at the 12 feet. I would continue to allow stacked parking. I would not change the downtown parking requirement. And the last one, I was thinking maybe in the larger parking lots, we reduce that 90% to something like 75% to allow some flexibility going forward while we look at the bigger picture of where we go from there. Again, I think that's up for debate, but I think we could make a change, at least open the door for slightly smaller parking lots as we move forward.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley, can I ask Brad, on the downtown parking, that was one that I was a little concerned about. I just would be afraid if I vote for this, that I'm saying there's not more creativity that could be used in terms of problem-solving downtown. I don't want it to, I, one of the things I have been wanting greater discussion on is about parking downtown. So I, this is one I would want a lot of discussion on from those two groups. So I get that you're just saying we're keeping it the same, but also I don't want to say that that's what I believe necessarily. I think there are some really great, probably great solutions out there, we just haven't seen them yet. So can you help me feel the way you feel?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Finkeldein. I mean, I certainly see that we want to talk about parking downtown and have a plan for that going forward. You know, I'm concerned with the way it's set up into this parking, under this scenario as presented. I mean, to me, a 20% change, you know, if you have a building that doesn't go back the full 100 feet, it only goes back 50 feet, and someone wants to add 20 feet to the back, that would be a major change, and all of a sudden, that requires, you know, them to have parking, you know? A building in the middle of Mass Street that wants to add a second story, or Corners Street, I know there's been, you know, picking example because I'm looking out my window here, the Replay Lounge. If someone wanted to put a second story on top of Replay Lounge, definitely more than 20%. Now they need to have parking for the, you know? You know, I think that's different on a vacant lot. I mean, that's a discussion to have, and certainly most major redevelopments will want to have some parking, especially if there's a residential component. But I think on Mass Street, when we're talking about commercial properties and the 20% change, you know, we have a lot of vacant buildings, people want to make some changes. I don't think we want to tell those businesses, hey, you're going to have to figure out a way to add parking if you're going to expand the back of your business 20 feet, or you're going to put a loft in or something like that. I just don't think that's the message we want to send right now with Plan 2040.
Commissioner Larson here. So the recommendation is made by the Vice Mayor. I'm definitely in agreement regarding the downtown parking suggestion or proposal, because I think that it would be onerous on existing businesses, especially on Mass Street. And, you know, we had a parking study done, I don't know, three years ago or so, that basically stated there's lots of parking downtown, but you've got to be willing to walk a block or so to do that. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a conversation about how possibly to bring more parking downtown under, like, with a new building or whatever. So I'd be open to that as a long-term conversation. As far as the, I mean, overall, I'm in support of moving this forward because it has been, you know, in the works for quite some time, and we know there's going to be more changes, but at the same time, I could support what the Vice Mayor is talking about regarding some of the items that he thinks maybe needs more work. And also, I just want to add that I've always been an advocate for less parking with a balance within our neighborhoods. Obviously, the Oryad neighborhood is a good example of where we need to be careful about any sort of changes we make to parking requirements and how it impacts actual neighborhoods. But on commercial industrial properties, I think we've got way too much parking on, especially those big box stores. Even I just noticed the table there that showed the parking, you know, at the various some schools. I thought that was interesting, how much parking they had there, so I would be totally in favor of reducing more of that parking.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldein. Mary or Jeff? Again, I just kind of threw out this idea of reducing that range from 90% to something like 75% or 80%. like 75% or 80%. And I know we don't want to make big changes until we have a larger discussion, but any feedback on that or initial impressions on doing something like that?
Probably, did Mary Miller, planner, probably my initial question would be, when you say large parking lots, are you looking at something that's 400 spaces or 200 spaces? What are we considering large? I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, I had two thoughts. One would be you have the three ranges, and I was thinking about range C, which would just be over the 25 spaces, to allow like an 80% to 110% rather than 90% to 110%. That's one possibility. The other would be to add a category D, which would allow something like 75% to 110% for commercial, industrial, and public use categories. Just off the top of my head as I was reading this over the last week or so. And again, if the answer is that's making a change like that without considering the implications, we shouldn't go there, I appreciate that answer, and I understand it. I don't want to make more mistakes on the fly here, especially if we're going to continue to look at it, but I just ask the question.
Mary Miller, planner, I think it's an interesting idea, and it may work. Jeff might want to speak to this. I think it would probably be good for us to look at some of the larger parking lots when they're busy and just see, you know, what kind of flexibility they have, and I'll leave that maybe Jeff will.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, I would agree with Mary on that one. We probably want to take a look at that number as it comes down because that might have some implications with the way some sites are being parked at. We were comfortable with the 90 because we thought it was close to what we kind of already see in the community, but it's not a, wasn't a hard and fast number that we landed on. We would probably just want to take a look at that lower percentage and make sure we're not seeing some kind of issue being induced on the item, just to make sure.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, you know, I think probably, given that we're going to want to continue to look at this, as Commissioner Shipley has said, and like Planning Commission, a multimodal look at it, I guess my thought would be, let's stick with the recommendation on that piece. Personally, I would change the other four, and then adopt it tonight, and then ask for us to continue to look at the big picture on some of those parking things.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I appreciate that you'd spend paired to four from five. I think that was a good call, and I think I could support that.
This is Mayor Nanda. Vice Mayor Finkeldein, is that a motion that you would like to make?
I was hoping Commissioner Bulley would make the motion, but no, I will do my best and maybe make sure Sheri can hear me so she understands and can repeat back to make sure we have the, have a clear understanding. But I'd make a motion to approve text amendment TA 13235 for Article 9, parking, loading, and access of the Land Development Code and associated sections of Article 5, use specific standards, and 20-1701 general terms with recommended revisions based upon the comments received at the September 25, 2019 Planning Commission meeting and provided as written communications for Multimodal Transportation Commission with the additional changes of keeping the downtown parking standard as it exists, keeping eight and a half width, eight and a half feet parking spots, keeping 12-foot access aisles, and keeping the current rules on stacked parking. And with those changes, adopt ordinances 9772, 9773, and 9774.
Commissioner Larson, I second that.
Sheri, is that sufficient for you?
Sheri Redeman, City Clerk, that's what I have. I just want to confirm that Mary and Jeff are comfortable that that catches the direction they need.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, we're comfortable with that, and we also have it recorded.
Okay. This is Mayor Nanda. We had a motion from Vice Mayor Finkeldein, seconded by Commissioner Larson. Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley? Was that aye? Aye, sorry. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye, that passes unanimously. I would like to request that we recess for approximately 10 minutes at this point, unless anybody is unamenable to that. We'll be back in 10. Heading back right now. Sheri, do I need to do a roll call again?
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. Yes, please.
You're muted, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I don't, yes, please.
Hang on, hang on. Too many buttons. There you go.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and do that. Commissioner Larson? Here. Vice Mayor Finkeldein?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
And I am Mayor Nanda, and I am here. We are ready for item number four on the agenda, Consider Approving a Request to Rezone, D 2108, approximately 5.122 acres from IBP District to RM 12D District located at 1209 Research Park Drive, and Consider Adopting on First Reading Ordinance 9771.
Good evening, Commissioners, Sandy Day Planning Office. I'd like to first remind you before we get started about any ex parte communications you may have had on this item.
Thank you. Would you like us to go ahead and disclose this? Okay, I have had none.
Commissioner Larson, I have had none.
Vice Mayor Finkeldein, I've had none.
Mr. Bulley, I've had none.
Commissioner Shipley, I've had none.
Thank you.
Thank you. This request for rezoning includes just over five acres located in the Orient West Industrial Business Park. Its proposed zoning is for RM 12D, which would allow duplex development. The property is located on the northwest corner of Research Park Drive and Legends Drive, and the property is currently undeveloped. Surrounding land uses include developed residential subdivision to the north that includes both detached and duplex housing. The area to the west includes a linear park connection and residential development. Property to the south includes a vacant lot and the Montessori School along the south side of Legends Drive, and then the lots to the east of Research Park Drive include office and recreational uses within the industrial business park. More intensive uses are generally located along Wacarosa Drive to the east and to the south of Legends Drive. There are multiple vacant lots within the IBP District today. The request represents infill residential development and exchanges undeveloped IBP zoning for proposed RM 12D zoning. The IBP District is a specific type of industrial zoning with the purpose of providing space in an attractive and appropriate location for low-impact employment and manufacturing uses in an industrial business park setting. Current makeup of uses includes school, offices, medical offices, extended care uses, and participants' sport and recreation uses in addition to some technical manufacturing uses within the IBP District today. If approved, the development pattern would, in the existing streets, provide a physical boundary between the zoning districts. Legends Drive and the Montessori School would generally become the northern boundary of the IBP District within the interior portion of the neighborhood, providing land use transition within the neighborhood. Property is part of the West Lawrence neighborhood, and the neighborhood extends north of Sixth Street and south of Clinton Parkway. Uses along the arterial street are generally more intensive, and the majority of the neighborhood is developed with low-density residential development, including detached and duplex housing. Only limited development of the IBP District has occurred in the past several years, and all of that development has occurred... occurred in the past several years, and all of that development has occurred south of Legends Drive. Notable exception is the development of the Cedar Grove subdivision to the north that includes RS 7 and RM 12D zoning. That property has been, the subject property's been vacant since it was originally zoned industrial in the early 1980s. Approval of the request allows the established residential development pattern to expand into the north portion of the IBP District and provides infill residential development. The RM 12D zoning allows for slightly higher density than what the surrounding RS 7 districts would allow and is consistent with recommendations of Plan 2040 for infill development, density, and development where services and infrastructure are available. Planning Commission considered this item at their May Planning Commission meeting. The Commission's vote was split, and they failed to provide a recommendation. The property owners in the surrounding area did file a petition in opposition of the proposed zoning. The petition was valid and requires supermajority vote of the Commission in order to approve the request. I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is on the line as well. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor Renanda, thank you, Sandra. Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, here. Sandy, the question I have is the RM 12, the proposed that I, the proposal that I read in the staff package was that it was going to be duplexes or townhouses, is that correct?
That's correct. The RM 12D District allows duplex, but it does not allow multifamily. So it would be duplex development or townhouses.
Okay. And so the proposal that they have, then, it looked like there was, I can't remember right offhand, how many, how many units they were proposing. It seemed like the per acre unit was pretty similar to some of the surrounding area properties, is that correct?
That's correct. The concept plan that was included with the zoning packet, I think, showed 13 residential lots, and that would be about 26 units. The applicant has submitted a preliminary plat that is in review that is anticipating this rezoning, and that would be going to the Planning Commission later this month if the zoning is approved. And I, off the top of my head, I can't remember if that's 14 or 15 lots, so times two upwards of 30 units. That's still a very low density within that parameter on that five acres.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, maybe a follow-up or clarification on that? So, we, and we've talked about this in the past, the difference between units and people. So it could be a townhouse, it could still be three unrelated people could live there. There's no rule that the people that live there have to be families and not students. So my real question is, then how many people or how many cars are we talking about?
Sandy Day Planning, I'd have to pull up the code to look at that, but I believe for duplex housing, it is two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Very typically, we see two-car garages and driveways, so those units commonly end up providing four parking spaces per, per unit. That's a much higher ratio of parking than you would have in a conventional multifamily.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, just to kind of follow up on that one. For the land development code, with the current way it is, not based on the changes that were just considered this evening, duplexes are required to provide parking at one per bedroom space. And the occupancy question you were mentioning earlier, because it's zoned RM, the code also permits no more than four unrelated in a dwelling unit at that point in time. But it is, parking is based upon bedroom for duplex use.
So just to clarify, Commissioner Shipley, Jeff, your quick math that you're always very good at, how many, how many people is that?
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, for, for parking or for total, just assuming the four unrelated?
I'm gonna say parking. Sorry, Commissioner Shipley, I'm gonna say parking because as well, we've heard or might hear later, there's not a traffic study required. I just want to be clear that it may or may not add traffic to that traffic circle in particular. So maybe cars is a question.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, off the top of my head, real quickly here, I think it'd be right around 100 potential people if you assume a maximum occupancy of every duplex unit in the development. I think it actually, it might be 104 if I get my math correctly worked out there. I think that's all right.
Ms. Mayor Renanda, are there any other questions for staff?
Commissioner Shipley, this might also be for Jeff, and I think maybe you mentioned this in the planning meeting. Can you talk about the IBP inventory that we have?
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, certainly, the IBP zoning district, the Industrial Business Park District, is one of our industrial zoning categories that we have. It is not one that's abundant in the city. You tend to see a lot of IG, IL, or IM zoning. So your medium, your light, or your general industrial zoning. IBP is mainly geared and intended to kind of be for research, business, park-style development. So you tend to see it in kind of your, if you think of buildings along kind of Bob Billings Parkway and Wacarosa Drive, some of those older buildings that have been there for a number of years, kind of in that research park setting. I usually describe it as almost like a research campus-style setting that you would tend to see. IBP does allow a wide mixture of uses, but again, it's, it's very limited in where it's been prescribed and zoned in the city. It's mostly on the western side of Lawrence, kind of around Wacarosa Drive, typically between Harvard and really kind of down towards Clinton Parkway, kind of in that area, right along that, that stretch there. So it is been a very slow-absorbing kind of a district. One thing we talk about in planning quite, quite a lot is absorption rates with, with the zoning district. You might zone something commercial, and it might be a vacant lot for months or a couple of years. With industrial, you might zone it and sit there for a good number of years or even a decade because of just the way that it absorbs and the way that the market asks for that kind of product. So it is a very limited zoning district that we have in the city. It's mostly in this part of the community. But we don't think kind of the changes that are going on in this part necessarily mean that IBP isn't working in this exact, specific location. It might be better suited elsewhere, or it might just be kind of retooled in some way possibly. So that's kind of the reasoning and the rationale in the staff report.
Commissioner Shipley, just maybe a follow-up. I, I feel like I know the answer, but just so you say it, it wouldn't be qualified for live-work or multi-use the way we talk about a lot of other projects that come forward?
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, that's correct, Commissioner. It's very limited in its residential capabilities. In fact, off the top of my head, I'm not sure it has any residential capabilities currently in that zoning category. So the live-work and those other ones would not necessarily fall in, or excuse me, they would not necessarily fall in that line as neatly as some other districts were. I can double-check that, that district just to be sure for those residential components real quickly.
Jeff Crick, Planning Development Services Director, just looking through Article 4 of the Land Development Code there, the IBP zoning district does not currently permit any household living uses.
Mayor Renanda, other questions? We don't have anyone signed up for public comment on this item. Porter, is there anyone present who wishes to give public comment on this item?
No, Mayor.
Ms. Mayor Renanda, thank you. So we will bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Finkelstein. Does the applicant get to make the presentation?
Ms. Mayor Renanda, the applicant may speak if the applicant wishes to, or if we have questions for the applicant, they can, they can take those as well. Would you, would you like to add anything?
Yeah. Mayor Renanda, Philip Struble, Land Plan Engineering. Yeah, I'd like to make a short presentation about this project, and thank you for hearing our request to rezon this from IBP to RMD, or RM 12D. A little history on this property, you know, the genesis of this property was a brainstorm, a brain, a dream of Bob Billings, and that it was to create a biotech campus centered around 15th Street and Wacarosa Drive. And the remnants of that dream still exists today. There's the laboratory space on the southwest corner of the 15th and Wacarosa intersection. There is the, what we call the Hall Kimbrell Building, which is on the northeast corner, which the city owned part of it as the police facility. And then there is the existing Campbell Becker Building just further north. And those are three of the original buildings that Bob really started to create this campus. This property was at the far north end of that dream and overthrew a handful of revisions and changes in zoning code. It became the IBP zoning that we see today. Bob's dream fell on its face for a number of reasons, but one of the most, most significant reasons was that the lots were not big enough. They were not located in the right location, and they didn't have the access that was necessary to make them successful. I want to make a couple of other points about this. First of all, our, our request conforms to Horizon 2040, and it conforms in two different ways. Number one is that the idea that industrial property needs to, right, be of lots of the appropriate size, just exactly what Bob Billings discovered, be located in the right locations. And the second one would be have proper access. For the same reasons that Bob's dream didn't succeed in this location, are the same reasons that those are included in Horizon 2020. You know, appropriate industrial ground, if you will, is located in Venture Park and in East Hills Business Park and some other places around town. This really doesn't qualify as industrial ground, which is why we, we continue to suffer through trying to promote it and put it in a category of the industrial inventory. Because it, it just, you know, the, the things that are going out there will go into a lot of other zoning categories: schools, real estate offices. We did have a storage facility go in in the last couple of years, which would qualify as industrial, but most of the rest of the uses don't qualify for that. And then lastly, for, for this property, you know, we have the recommendation of planning staff for their approval. Talking about IBP zoning, to, to, to the inventory idea, there is 30 years' supply of IBP ground at the rate it's currently being absorbed. It's not just a decade or so of ground. I mean, there are two or three decades of inventory of this ground. And there are many places that have ground that are significantly more appropriate for industrial uses than this piece of ground. On the other hand, I want to point out that the thing we have, are lacking in our inventory is residential property. If you spend any time looking at the zoning map for Lawrence, Kansas, you're going to notice that there is practically no ground zoned for duplexes. And duplexes right now are our most opportune construction or residential opportunities for affordable housing. Yet, we, we are, we are running out of that. In fact, you know, one of the interesting things about this exercise of trying to get this piece of ground rezoned from an industrial zoning to a single-family zoning is if you extend Horizon 2040's mandate or suggestion to infill property in Lawrence, Kansas, all the rest of the applications you're going to see for duplex zoning, again, for affordable housing for the general people in Lawrence, Kansas, are going to be contentious, are going to be rezoning from something that has been historically a zoning or a dream of somebody else to be duplex zoning. And so this is just the start of what it's going to take to get infill property, infill projects done in Lawrence, Kansas. And so this change from another zoning to duplex zoning is something that we're going to have to see a lot of going forward because that's how duplex zoning is going to get reintroduced and get an inventory back in Lawrence, Kansas. And so I think, you know, we need to focus on finding more duplex ground and more ground in Lawrence, Kansas that we can develop as affordable housing. And, and the chances are getting harder and harder to find that opportunities, and this is one of the last few ones we have that are, are things that we can get to immediately. I also want to talk about a couple of things that came up at the Planning Commission meeting. Number one was storm sewer. And, and the comments were about that the developer of this project was involved in the existing part of Cedar Grove Development. And I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting that while, while we were at the Planning Commission and getting prepared to go to the Planning Commission, the developer of the original Cedar Grove Development was in the process of working with existing homeowners surrounding Cedar Grove Development about their stormwater problems. And, and I'm happy to report now that two things have happened. The developer has met with many of those homeowners and has taken care of as many of the drainage problems that we are aware of that Cedar Grove has caused on the original developments. The second thing I want to point out is that he went to the extent of designing a new storm sewer just in case city staff wanted us to install it that might alleviate some, some other unanticipated drainage problems. City staff looked at it and had recommended us not to do those improvements. Yet, the developer of Cedar Grove has gone the additional distance to be prepared to do those things. The other thing that I want to close with, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions, is I, I think it's important to address the protest petition. And you, you've noticed, hopefully, in our, in the packet of the number of letters and emails and screenshots of text messages from adjacent property owners who are in favor of this development. I think it's, I, I want to get over the characterization that the neighbors around this development are opposed to it. I think that is completely wrong. We feel that the neighbors around this development are strongly in favor of it. And they're in favor of it from a couple of reasons. Number one is that the unknown nature of an industrial project going on this project is, is fairly disconcerting to a lot of people. On, on the other hand, coming in here with a duplex development that is a single-ownership development that has development-wide lawn care, snow care, and then professional management, professional care of all the buildings, it's going to be a very, very nice-looking development. And then the, the last thing I want to point out with this being a duplex development under one ownership is, and hopefully that the, the residents of Cedar Grove are going to appreciate this, is right in the very corner of where you enter this development is the detention pond. And, and what's a detention pond? It's a hole in the ground. Yet, this development's going to be able to come in there and provide the abilities and the resources to take that detention pond and actually hopefully turn it into a nicer amenity for the whole area as opposed to just being a hole in the ground that's going to collect stormwater. Back to just closing on the stormwater issue, all of our stormwater from this project, from this zoning category, from this five acres drains into the detention pond and then drains into the city storm sewer. None of our stormwater drains on any neighbors whatsoever. So we will have, this development will have no impact. No stormwater will drain from this development into any, any of the adjacent owners. So with that, you know, I'm not here to criticize the protest petition, but it really characterizes that, that, that there's a lot of people against us. There's been some misrepresentation about our development. This is not an apartment project. This is a, a duplex development project. It's, it's, our submittal for our preliminary plat was intentionally submitted early, so we are on record right now of asking for a duplex development. It's nothing else other than that. Our, our preliminary plat shows it's a duplex development. It's not an apartment project. And so consequently, we've had some people who signed the protest petition because they were told this was going to be an apartment project, have come back and asked to rescind their signature on that protest petition. Now whether they do or not, it, it makes no difference to me. We, I want all your support. We, I want all your support for our project. But I think it, it just shows that when people know exactly what's going to happen on this project, and they know the people that are doing it, that it's, that, that this is a good neighbor project, and that we are working really, really hard to be good neighbors to everybody around this development. So with that, I'd just be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
This is Mayor Annanda. Thank you. I had a quick question. You've mentioned affordable housing in your comments. I'm curious if you're committing any of those units to be affordable housing?
Phil Struble, Land Plan Engineering, you're using affordable housing in terms of being some kind of category, and what we're using it for is affordable housing in terms of the common workforce of, for Lawrence, Kansas, to where people that work for me can afford to pay on their own salary that they get the housing units that are, that are in this development. But no, we're not actually applying for any quote "affordable" kind of housing category. No.
Thank you. This is Mayor Annanda again. What is the price range for your units?
They're low 302, 50, 300. Per unit.
$300 per unit?
The units will sell between 250,000 and 300,000.
Yeah, the, the value of the units are between 250 and, and 300,000 per unit. I, I, I'm not, I can't answer right now what that equates to, like a, a monthly price or anything.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Thank you for your presentation. Can you bring it back up to the commission for discussion?
Mayor, this is Commissioner Shipley. This might be kind of verification with Jeff. What is our, I asked you about our, what we have IBP, but I didn't ask you about RM12. What's our stock look like of that?
Jeff Craig, Planning and Development Services Director. Off the top of my head, I don't have that number right in front of me at this moment, but my, my guess would be that it is a pretty low number, because most of the, the RM12 zoning district is either existing housing stock that's been there for a good number of years, or it's also projects that are currently in development or are just completing development. So just kind of, anecdotally off the top of my head, I'd say it probably is a pretty low inventory at this point in time.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. A couple of thoughts as I listened. One, I, I do think we have a lot of IBP land. I, I counted up 16 lots on the interactive map and a lot of acreage in those lots. Second, you know, we recently had a situation in which we had IBP backed up to a neighborhood, and the neighborhood obviously was not very happy with having industrial backed up to their residential development. As, as Sandy pointed out, and the staff report pointed out, having residential on this corner to allow residential to back up to residential, to have streets separating industrial from residential is a good land use plan, I think. And I also believe that we do need more duplex lots, and I think this is a good location for duplex lots. So, and I do think reading and seeing about what the neighbors, it makes sense if I was a neighbor that I would oppose an apartment complex, and I oppose industrial. To read the comments to say, if this is going to be a townhome project, I support it, that makes sense to me. And, and I, and I believe those, those comments as it relates to residential. And finally, I do think I trust staff and to, to work with the developer to make sure we can fund, fix, and make sure there is no stormwater problems. So I think this is a good project, and, and I, and I support the staff recommendation, and I'll support the project.
Mayor, Commissioner Shipley. I don't know who this would be a question for. I don't know if it would be Jeff or not. You guys gave a nice list of the studies that aren't required. And one of them was downstream sewer study. And I understand why they're not required. Anybody there who can tell me, is there a significant difference between what that would mean for 100 people in this area versus, you know, 100 people there 24 hours a day versus maybe 50 people there during work hours?
This is CND with planning, and I'll start this response, and the, the applicant may be able to provide more information. So depending on what type of land use that you have, your impact on the downstream sanitary sewer can, can be more or less. A residential use is a fairly fixed number in what that expectation is. In, in an industrial use, depending on what the business is of that water use, that sewer use could be quite high, depending on what the manufacturing process is and what, what it demands. So there's a lot of variability into that response. The applicant has submitted the preliminary plat, as I mentioned earlier, and the whole complement of studies that goes with that, the downstream sanitary sewer analysis, stormwater study, the traffic study, all of those are in process and being reviewed. There were, I think, maybe a, a few very minor technical comments on those, but otherwise, they have been accepted by staff at this point.
This is Commissioner Bowley. I would like to voice my support for the staff recommendation in the project. I believe it's compliant with our goals in Horizon 2040, and I think that's an important fact.
This is Mayor Annanda. I also agree with the, the recommendation from staff. I think that it's important to point out that a quarter of a million dollars or more is not an affordable home, so I don't think it's necessarily contributing in that way. But I do think that more housing in general, particularly next to other residential, will be far preferable to those neighbors than, than something industrial or an apartment complex.
Commissioner Larson here. I agree with Commissioner Bowley that this meets our goals of 2040 for density, and we have had numerous reports indicating that we're shortage of residential-type lots in Lawrence, so this is, I think, a very good infill project. And this land, this property in this area has been vacant for a decade, a couple of decades, I think, at least. So the idea that we can get it back, or we can get it onto the tax rules at a higher rate, I think, is, is very positive for the city. And so I am very supportive of this project.
This is Commissioner Shipley. I maybe want to clarify something that Commissioner Larson just said, but also I was listening to what the mayor said. I seem to remember being told at multiple meetings that industrial actually brings in higher taxes than residential. Did I misunderstand that?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. I'll just jump in and say, the assessed rate for industrial property is about double that of a residential property. So yes, in theory, industrial brings in a lot more money than a residential development. However, an empty industrial lot compared to a developed lot, residential lot, the developed residential lot will bring in significantly more than an empty industrial.
Commissioner Shipley, thank you, Brad. And I, I, what I wanted to just take a minute to talk about the ambivalence from Planning Commission, because I, I felt like it had logic to it. And while we talk about density a lot, we also talk about creating neighborhoods that are accessible by foot to work. And we talk a lot about minimizing driving. On the other hand, I do want to say that I've noticed a lot of pushback in creating density on the east side of town, and this is density on the west side of town. So I did just want to acknowledge, I, I see the ambivalence that, that Planning Commission had with this. Actually, keeping it industrial would be in keeping with Plan 2040. And I can understand them wanting to save this for that aspiration. But I also, you're my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Larson here. I just, from what I've heard in discussions tonight, is that we've got about 30 years of IBP property that's available out there, whereas we only got about two or three years of residential-type property that's available. So I think our inventory is very much unbalanced, and this is an opportunity for us to, to at least use some of that, that land where it's needed the most.
This is Commissioner Bowley, and I'm ready for the motion if that's appropriate. My move that we approve the rezoning Z20-108, approximately 5.122 acres from IBP District to RM12D District, located at 1209 Research Park Drive, based on the findings of fact found in the body of the staff report, and then we adopt on first reading ordinance number 9771.
Mr. Larson, I second that.
This is Mayor Annanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Bowley, a second from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Annanda, aye. That passes unanimously. Item five this evening is consider approving a text amendment TA 2022 to the City of Lawrence Code, Chapter 20, permitting detached dwelling use in the RM32 zoning district initiated by the City Commission, March 3, 2020. Consider adopting on first reading ordinance 9775 and 9781.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Luke Mortensen. I'm, I'm a planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. As Mayor Annanda just stated, item number five tonight on the regular agenda is a proposed text amendment to the City of Lawrence Code to permit the detached dwelling residential use by right in the RM32 zoning district. Paul Warner, Paul Warner Architects submitted a request to initiate this item, and this is text amendment 20-00022 in January, and the City Commission initiated it on March 3rd. Following staff's, planning staff's recommendation, the City Commission also initiated a text amendment TA-20-00079 to permit detached dwelling residential use by right in the RM12, RM12D, RM15, RM24, and RMO zoning districts. Staff determined that separating the detached dwelling in RM32 from the remaining RM and RMO zoning districts into two separate text amendments was appropriate, as Mr. Warner had originally submitted for just RM32 district. Staff presented both text amendments to the Planning Commission at the May 27th meeting. The Planning Commission voted 5 to 5 on TA-200022 detached dwelling in RM32, which constitutes a failure to recommend. They deferred to make a recommendation on the remaining TA detached dwelling in, in the remaining RM districts pending tonight's City Commission determination. The second text amendment is currently on July, July's Planning Commission agenda. The Planning Commission had asked staff to provide answers to a number of questions related to the detached dwelling use in the RM32 district specifically. That memo was included in tonight's packet. The memo mirrors the original staff report, which recommends approval of the proposed text amendment. Staff believes removing the special use permit requirement for detached dwelling use will not create an adverse effect on adjacent properties. There are two ordinances related to tonight's item. Ordinance number 9781 updates Section 20-402 of the Land Development Code. That's our residential district use table. Section 20-508 of the Land Development Code, which is the use standard section for the detached dwelling use. The proposed text amendment will remove the requirement to obtain an SUP if the majority of land uses on the subject property's block face are not also detached dwelling. And I'll add quickly that the block face is only the one side of the block that the subject property is on in between the two cross streets. A proposed detached dwelling in the RM32 district will still need to be located on a planted lot, and the proposed changes to both code sections, visual changes, are available in the staff report. To conclude, staff recommends approval on first reading of ordinances 9781 and 9775 relating to detached dwelling in the RM32 zoning district. Staff will notify Planning Commission of your determination, and you will see the second text amendment at an upcoming City Commission meeting. I can stand for questions as they come. Thank you.
This is Mayor Annanda. Are there any questions? Um, we had no one signed up for a public comment on this item. Is there anyone present to give a public comment?
No, Mayor.
Mayor Annanda, thank you. So it is back to the commission for discussion. Courtney, Commissioner Shipley, you're muted.
I'm muted, sorry. Thought I clicked. I apologize. Commissioner Shipley. There was some discussion at the planning meeting about, particularly in the Oriad neighborhood, that the way the trash is done there is different. I think staff maybe had some discussions today. I don't know if someone could clarify those questions for me?
Yes, this is Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services staff. The way that trash is handled in the Oriad District is a little bit different than the rest of the city. When a, when an application for something that requires a site plan, so anything that has three or more dwelling units comes in through the Oriad, in the Oriad neighborhood, the sanitation and solid waste folks will get a review on that site plan. And at that point, they'll work with the applicant to get the right solid waste pickup. Anything smaller, so like a duplex or a detached dwelling in this case, is then either the applicant or the property owner works directly with the sanitation department when they're determining what size cart or if they need to do some sort of dumpster pad. On lots of butt alleys, they do prefer dumpsters on pads in portions of Oriad. They actually prefer shared dumpsters. When there's no alley available, they do rolling carts. This, the, the MSO and solid waste department is, kind of takes the lead on those decisions when, when they're made.
Commissioner Larson here. I have a quick question for you. Could you talk about the parking, how, what parking would be required for these units?
Yes, Luke Mortensen, planner with Planning and Development Services staff. Parking for detached dwelling is, so let me start parking, and I'm sure you all, all are aware, parking is determined based off of use, and that's in Article 9 of our code. So the required off-street parking for a detached dwelling use is going to be the same across the city. And in this case, Article 9 requires two off-street spaces for a detached dwelling. So that would be the same if the new single-family home was reviewed on a building permit, or if it was reviewed in a site plan, or if it was reviewed as part of a special use permit. That parking requirement doesn't change. We just need to see that there's those two off-street parking spaces. And I will add, the Oriad Neighborhood Design Guidelines, they address parking, but they don't address the amount of off-street parking required. Those guidelines will just mainly touch on the location of the parking pad or the garage structure. It's the surfacing materials, those kind of design elements, setback from mainstructures.com.
So Commissioner Larson here, just another question. So if this were to pass, would there be an opportunity at some point during the process for a neighborhood to... for a neighborhood to weigh in on the project, or is it just an administrative-type decision?
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Staff. So building permits are administratively reviewed and approved. Even with a special use permit or a site plan, those are also administratively approved. There are neighbor notice components to that that you don't get with the building permit. That's kind of the biggest difference. So with the special use permit, there is the neighbor notice within 400 feet, that type of thing.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, if I could just add to that a little bit. Special use permits require a hearing before the Planning Commission and ultimately the decision by the City Commission to either create the permit or not. So it would go through a couple rounds of public hearings. It would go through the 400-foot noticing requirements required of a special use permit. Site plans go through a 400-foot noticing requirement, but they're ultimately an administrative approval. Under the Land Development Code today, detached dwellings and duplex uses are not required to go through a site planning process. So if somebody was to propose a detached dwelling, it would go right to the building permit process for review for compliance with the Land Development Code.
Commissioner Larson here, thank you for that clarification, Jeff. So if, if, if we had a situation where a site plan, you said with the site plan that is also administratively approved, so can a neighborhood challenge that?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, yeah, you can protest a site plan. We've seen a few of these over the years. There are requirements to those. They do have to be filed within nine days, and usually it's, somebody reaches out to the office and asks to be notified of those and is following those projects very closely. We also make those applications available on our online supplemental page. People can see those on a map and also see the site plan. The site plan does have a protesting availability as part of the code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, this might also be for Jeff. I feel like I'm a little confused about why we, so you take RS32, and you, so we wanted higher density, or we said we wanted higher density, or we allowed higher density, and then instead you want to put in a single-family unit? I guess I'm trying to figure out how that comport to the planning.
Luke Mortensen, Planning Staff, I can kind of do what Sandy did and start the question, and maybe Jeff can finish it. Right now, detached dwelling is permitted with a special use, so it's permitted in a way. So we're not totally changing the code permitting a use that was never allowed there. And one thing noted in the staff report is there are lots and parcels throughout the city that they don't have the land area to support what the zoning might allow them to. And so there are situations where a detached dwelling based off of the land area might be the most appropriate residential use.
Jeff Crick with Planning Development Services, I would just add to that, that this doesn't necessarily preclude a higher-density development. It just also allows the availability of detached dwelling to be there in case the lot doesn't have the ability to support that higher density like Luke mentioned, or in the case of unfortunate situation where if the structure is a non-conformity and it burns down, or there's a disaster that occurs, this would allow them to bring back a detached dwelling by right as part of that process and not have to go through the special use permitting process and reviews to kind of come back to that item. So we were looking at it as a way of kind of expanding the potential residential options available in the RM districts that we might not necessarily see with current use regulations in place.
Commissioner Larson here, Jeff, I have a question. Are there a lot of properties where this would apply in Lawrence? With the RM32, do we have that many properties where we could do an ADU like that?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, with RM32, it's probably not as much as we see with RM12, 15, and 24. There's actually quite a number of properties that have the land area to support a detached dwelling, but not enough land area to do a duplex for higher use. They don't have enough the land area to do it. We get a lot of calls throughout the week for properties that are zoned RM, and people are trying to work through purchasing the properties or refinancing, and we usually have to break the news to them that the property is currently a non-conformity. It would require a special use permit to be reestablished, and that's usually where we kind of see a lot of those come in. So RM32, I'd say are probably the lesser of that, but we see them a lot in 12, 15, and 24.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Staff, this wasn't included in the staff report, but I spoke on the phone with Marcy Francisco this afternoon. In the staff report, it's noted that she's commented a number of times on this item. A very brief and very preliminary analysis shows that we came up with about 12 parcels just within a few minutes where they were zoned RM32 but could not, with the area requirements of that zoning district, support more than two dwelling units.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shipley, I think this might be for Jeff. In one of those eventualities that it was a disaster and a home burned down, wouldn't they just be as negatively affected by the newly adopted setbacks, whenever that was, as they would by this?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, to some extent, that is a possibility. There are provisions in the setback portion of our code that allows for leeways and averages based upon the block faces Luke mentioned of the neighboring properties on that side of the street between the two cross streets. There's also some provisions in there if the lot is a non-conformity that allows some variation in the way that setbacks are applied to them to kind of give them some guidance there. So it's potential that you could run into some of those situations, but the code does alleviate those and some exceptions that are currently in there.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Staff, and of course, as Commissioner Shipley knows, border zoning appeals can always grant, or can always hear a variance request from a setback requirement.
Any other discussion from Commissioners?
Commissioner Shipley, so Jeff, one of my concerns kind of goes back to something I learned years ago. In theory, I could bulldoze my house, and I wouldn't have to bring you a site plan, right? I could just tear my house down, and you would not know what I was going to do or not do. Is that true?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, that's correct. You can demolish a structure and not have a rebuilding plan unless you fall into a historic district or subject to the HRC.
Maybe not as much in the Oriad since they have design guidelines. Sorry, Commissioner Shipley. Maybe my concern is that smaller, affordable houses would sort of fall prey to something like this, where a smaller two-bedroom home that are around in lots of neighborhoods would be replaced with a four- or six-bedroom home, maybe wasn't originally intended to become apartments, but might do so over time. And I'm wondering how we combat that, or we're opening the door to something unintended here.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, when a structure would go under, go a change like that, moving from a detached dwelling to a multifamily dwelling or a congregate dwelling, that would trigger a site planning process, and that would be, as part of that, we would do it as an administrative review to make sure it met the parking, other code requirements to that. So it is something that we have kind of seen throughout the years. It's, that's a great question to kind of, to think about, is that there is a lot of different ways that structures kind of evolve over time as they come in there. The way that we were envisioning the text amendment, I would assume that the applicant was too, is that it was trying to figure out a way of allowing the kind of the default use in the Land Development Code, which is a detached dwelling, kind of expanding that potential out there so that we would either work to solve a non-conformity, or also try to make it a little easier. If somebody did have a lot, they could do a by-right detached dwelling as a potential item in there. So if there is a change in use, there are some ways that the code would look at it a little differently. Just kind of give you some of the thought that we had related to that.
Anything else? Can you refresh my memory if we've already checked for a public comment on this item? Yes, okay, I'm seeing a nod. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Larson here, before we go to that, I did have something that I would like to, for us to take a look at. I do have a concern of just making this entirely an administrative process, so I was just curious as to whether there'd be any interest in, at the very minimum on these, require that at least a site plan be submitted as part of the process, not the SUP aspect of it, but just a site plan. So that gives the neighborhood an opportunity to weigh in on it if they choose to appeal it.
This is Mayor Nanda. What is the cost generally associated with a site plan?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, it would vary from site to site. The application fee would probably be between $200 and $400. I don't know the cost of the associated drawings and studies that might be required as part of that process. It could be a substantial sum depending upon what all is involved with the drawings and sites and some of the details that come along with it. So I don't have a good number of figure I can provide this evening.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you. How does that, how does that influence this conversation for you, Lisa, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, I think what I heard from the Planning Commission is that it's more of a time issue, that an SUP can take numerous months to get through that process, whereas with a site plan, it's a much quicker process. But like I said, I'm not in favor of just totally getting away from any sort of public input on this, so that's why I'm offering up the possibility of at least, the very minimum having, have the requirement that a site plan be submitted for review, and with the neighborhood an opportunity to weigh in on it.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Jeff, could you talk about, just trying to think through the differences between an SUP and a site plan? And I could see where, again, maybe some things wouldn't be required in the SUP process that would be required in the site plan and vice versa. I'm just, I guess I wanted to make sure we're not making it more difficult that maybe the SUP would be the, a better way, but can you talk through the differences?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, certainly, I'll start with the site plan. It's usually on it, if everything is correct when it comes in, it's about a four- to six-week administrative review process that would go through. I'd be, do a lot of our different reviewers, so fire medical, MSO, a lot of our other departments would take a look at it there. For a special use permit, it would really be about a 14 to 16-week process. It would be kind of your best run at that one. It would require a hearing before the Planning Commission, and then two before the City Commission for first and second reading on that one. Right now, when somebody would submit for a detached dwelling, they just currently submit a building permit, and they just pay the building permit fee as part of that process. So this would add a fee, either a site plan or a special use permit would add a fee in a review process timeline that is currently not in place for a detached dwelling. So that could have ramifications related to the cost of housing. It could also have ramifications to the length of time that it takes to go from submission all the way to getting a permit issued out there. So there's a couple of different streams of ways that that might have an impact on development as it stands today, but I'm just to kind of give you an idea, about four to six weeks on its best moment for a site plan, about 14 to 16 for a special use permit.
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Just thinking out loud again, for example, does a site plan require a survey and a downstream water analysis and other things like that that might not be required in an SUP? Or would you expect those sorts of technical engineering requirements to be the same, either through an SUP or a site plan?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, thank you. I completely left that part out there. We would expect the drawings and the studies to be very identical in the site planning and the SUP process. A part of 2013-06, which is the special use permit required section, actually requires a drawing that is at site plan level, drawing with the details and site dimensions out there, and then the studies to support that development.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department, you may remember in the last few months, 1116 Tennessee Street came in as an SUP application as a multifamily to detached dwelling. So if that helps draw your memory, that would be kind of the process that we're talking about right now.
Commissioner Larson here, how long did it take that SUP to get through the process?
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department, he, or Mr. Warner submitted early, or early in 2020, around January time, I'd say. And then there was a little bit of delay due to COVID. I think he was bumped from maybe the April to the May meeting, but it was roughly from January to May.
This is Mayor Nanda. Are there alternatives that maybe would be less time-consuming and less costly that we could consider as sort of a compromise between having no process and a somewhat costly and lengthy process?
Luke Mortensen, Planning and PDS, and Jeff can agree or disagree. I think what he explained is kind of the three levels, building permit, site plan, and SUP is kind of the tracks that we are able to work with.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, I guess my last question, and I think I know the answer to this, but as, if we did what Commissioner Larson suggested and had a site plan requirement, would that cure the non-conforming use problem people had?
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department, not really. That non-conforming issue is still there. The law itself would, if it was a non-conforming law, would still be a non-conforming law. It would just be the site plan showing the proposed development on that non-conforming law.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, if I may, for a non-conforming use, the site plan would end up correcting some of the laws because they would have an approved site plan they could go back to.
Generally speaking, I supported this staff report, and in the process, they outlined, but I certainly see what Commissioner Lawson is trying to accomplish here by having a intermediate step, and so I'd certainly think that's an improvement over what we had.
This is Commissioner Bowley. We will revisit this again in a second reading. Is that correct?
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department, yes, and it will likely be around the same time that the, that the other text amendment with the remaining RM districts comes through with the plant, with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We'll kind of bring them together then.
Thank you.
So what do we want to do? I wonder if, when this comes back to us, maybe that would be the time for the discussion, or perhaps a proposal including Commissioner Larson's suggestion could be included in that discussion?
Commissioner Larson here, so Mayor, are you saying to defer this? Is that what you're?
I guess that's one option. Another would be to approve with the request that that is brought back for second reading for consideration. approve with the request that that is brought back for second reading for consideration?
This is Commissioner Bowley. It's my understanding that we can change in the second reading if we choose to. But, you know, guide me on this. Staff might want to weigh in. I think we could, for example, you know, consider a motion based on Commissioner Larson's suggestion and then have some time to think about it and come back again. But again, guidance on that would be good.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department. Yes, one of the options that you are charged with is approve with modifications.
Commissioner Larson, I'd like to make a motion. I would make a motion to approve the proposed text text amendment TA 20-0022 to the City of Lawrence Code, Chapter 20, Article 14, Use Table in Article 5, Use Regulations Regarding Permitting My Right to Detached Dwelling Use in the RM 32 zoning district. With the modification of requiring a site plan for any projects that go through this and adopt on first reading ordinance 9775 and ordinance 9781 with modifications.
Commissioner Shipley, a second?
This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Nay.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That passes four to one with Vice Mayor Finkeldie. Nippos. We are ready to move on to commission. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that I heard Sheri. Okay, we are ready to move on to commission items. Are there any future agenda items for commissioners to add? I know that we have, this is Mayor Nanda, I know that we have talked about a timeline for some of the initiatives that we are looking at right now. And I think this kind of bumps down to the city manager's report with the future agenda work session items, but perhaps getting those on that document as well. Because we have a lot coming up and just having those visible as well might be helpful. But I don't have any additional ones to add. Future work session items? Other items?
Commissioner Shipley, I, I was reminded during one of these items of the one that would sort of the list of studies that aren't required, and one of them is stormwater. And I don't know that I want to put it on there. I just wanted to see if other commissioners had a feeling about thinking about requiring stormwater studies. I understand at the beginning of a process, that would be onerous, and I understand that. But also I know there's other commissioners who have expressed concern for stormwater, the way things are changing, and it seems like that one of the number one concerns whenever something comes before us is the effects of stormwater when something is built. So I, I didn't know if that was something anyone was interested in discussing.
Commissioner Larson, I'm always interested in talking about stormwater, so that's definitely something I appreciate. I would actually like to possibly hear from staff to see what they would think would be the best way for us to, to look at this and, and review our stormwater situation. And I know in our CIP coming up, they've got some pretty significant asks regarding stormwater modeling as well as equipment to look more at our stormwater situation. And so I, I would be interested to hear what staff might have to say about it, too.
This is City Manager Craig Owens. You know, there are two slices at this, two kind of places where we, we can affect this significantly. One is through the way rates are driven and the way we make charges as a utility for stormwater. And there are some incentives to reduce your impervious coverage and reduce your consumption that are usually built into, and I think in the rate model and structure that we're looking at. The, the other then, of course, what you're talking about on regulatory compliance and having each site plan be considered in putting stormwater regulations in. So we do have the budget coming up, and as you mentioned, Commissioner Larson, their CIP things. We're going to be talking also about rates, utility rates and the stormwater rates, and what our plans are, master plans for, for this. Both pieces really are things that I, I know staff is looking at. Developing some strategies for how can we best control in both areas. So either place is appropriate, but I think we've got it queued up to be a budget discussion, and I think that would be at least a starting point. If we wanted to get deeper into it and schedule some specific time on this subject, then I'm certainly open to putting something on a discussion session in the next three, three to four months.
This is Mayor Nanda. Does that sound amenable? Seeing some nods. So it sounds like maybe that, that would be a plan.
Yeah. Commissioner Larson, that's fine with me.
Okay. Shipley, yes, please?
This is Vice Mayor Finkeldie. That is agreeable. I'm not sure I'd agree that I'm always excited about talking about stormwater like Commissioner Larson, but I'm certainly think it's a worthy topic. As other items, I would just note real quick, I was very excited, I mean, it's on the consent agenda, and I certainly didn't want to pull them off the consent agenda, but two of the items on there, one is starting the process to look at a donation program through our utilities. I know Commissioner, well, Mayor Nanda has pushed that for a while, and, and to see that starting to come to fruition is exciting. As well as the ESG application process, about $700,000 that we're working through, and Danielle has worked hard on. And I think we have a real good shot at quite a few of those, and, and maybe all of those. And certainly if they all come through, but even a large portion comes through, we can make, do some significant work in the area of homelessness that's really needed. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that will come to fruition. I want to thank Danielle for her work on the ESG application.
This is Mayor Nanda. Thank you for mentioning that, Vice Mayor. I almost wanted to pull it off the consent agenda just to squeal about it, because it is very exciting stuff that we're doing. We didn't have a conversation about it. And speaking of very exciting stuff, it is the Vice Mayor's birthday today, and he is here with us, so we're grateful for that. Anything else?
Happy birthday, Vice Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Any other other items? Okay, we are ready to move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. This is City Manager Craig Owens. I, I note the sales tax report that was slightly better news than we had anticipated, but that's all there, and we certainly can answer any questions on it. Again, another thing that we'll be talking about in our upcoming seven meetings that are ahead of us related to the budget. But wanted to, wanted to recognize that. The other is the upcoming agenda items, work sessions. We've already kind of talked about that, so. Lots of meetings together ahead on the, on the budget and strategic planning that is very interconnected. Happy to answer questions. I also want to make another note. We, we did also get recognized for the, the Kansas APWA Project of the Year with the 19th Street Tunnel. So that was a very exciting and big deal for us as well. So I want to recognize the people that worked hard on that. Including, including the, the decision makers that allocated the resources for it.
Mayor Nanda, thank you. Craig, are there any questions for Craig?
Commissioner Shipley, thanks, Mayor. I, I thought I might ask you, Craig, because I think maybe you've heard or there's a report, and I do see that Captain Bricksius is here. Usually there's a lot of discussion about what's going to happen at 4th of July to the run-up to 4th of July, and obviously a lot of other things were happening. I'm being asked by some of the usual suspects about reporting on what was happening with fireworks this time. A public display.
I'll have to lean on, this is City Manager Craig Owens, I'll have to lean on our police and fire folks that may know more than I do on the report on that.
Mayor Nanda, any questions for Craig? Okay, thank you, Craig. We are ready to review the calendar. Anything that I don't have?
I think, and our police chief was ready.
I'm so sorry. This is Mayor Nanda. I apologize. I'm clearly trucking. Please go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to point out that I don't have a report on the numbers or anything. We, we did give some instructions on how we would like the calls handled for this year. And that, that instruction to our folks was for any first offense to try and do as much education as possible. And if we came out for another time, we would be confiscating the fireworks based on the city ordinance. And then if there was continued efforts to, to use the fireworks, then we would be citing. But I don't have any numbers on the citations at the moment.
Mayor Nanda, thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, now we will look at the calendar. Anything to discuss on the calendar?
Commissioner Larson, I'm just glad to see ribbon cuttings happening again. I think I did one last week, and I can see a couple more on there now. So it's nice to see that, that event happening again.
Okay. So at this point, we will be heading into executive session. Do we have a motion for the first? And Sheri, may I clarify? We will be going to the first executive session, coming back, and then re-recessing into the second executive session.
Sheri Redeman, City Clerk, that is correct.
Mr. Mayor Nanda, thank you. So do we have a motion on the first one?
Commissioner Larson, do I need to read the whole action?
Yes.
Yeah, recessed the executive session for approximately 30 minutes to discuss employer employee negotiations pursuant to the employer employee negotiations exceptions set forth in KSA 75-4319B 3. The justification for the executive session is to keep employer employee negotiations matters confidential at this time. The City Commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with Resolution Number 7315 at the conclusion of the executive session.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie, a second?
This is Mayor Nanda. We have a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldie. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldie?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Okay, we will be in recess for 30 minutes in executive session.
The train, sorry, to where it starts from. Also.
We are headed back in. And just waiting to see for, oh, there she is, okay. I'll go ahead and take role. Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Mayor Nanda present, so we are all present in a count of four. We have nothing to report. We are prepared for our second executive session if we can have a motion.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Bulley. I move the recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding employment law pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The city commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with resolution number seventy-three fifteen at the conclusion of the executive session. This is Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Vice Mayor Nanda, we had a motion from Commissioner Bulley and a second from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That was unanimous. We will return in thirty minutes. Thank you. ...
According to our clock, you're early by about a minute and a half.
We blame Tony.
It'll take a few seconds for everybody to get back.
Perfect timing.
Not seeing story yet.
He just came in.
Do I need to report what we have to report if we are extending the meeting, Sheri?
If you're extending the executive session, you wouldn't tell me anything at this point. You would just extend it for however long.
Okay. This is Mayor Nanda. I'll go ahead and do roll call. We are back in session. Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley? Commissioner Bulley?
Oh, he's having trouble with his audio, I think.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
Here.
And I can see Commissioner Bulley, but I don't know that he can hear. Oh, there we go. Okay. We are all present and accounted for. Sheri, do we need to reread the entire motion to extend our executive session?
You do need to read the same language, just updating the time. And I apologize for that, but it's very clearly outlined by the Attorney General that we do it that way.
Mr. Commissioner Bulley, I move that we recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys regarding employment law pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The City Commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with Resolution Number 70 through 15 at the conclusion of the executive session.
Commissioner Larson, I second.
So Mayor Nanda, we have a motion from Commissioner Bulley, a second one from Commissioner Larson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Aye.
Commissioner Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda, aye. That is unanimous. We will be back in 15 minutes. Mayor Nanda, aye. That is unanimous. We will be back in 15 minutes.
Good.
Exactly.
I'm now getting more interested in sleeping.
I know. Uh-oh. I think they're extending.
Okay, I think we are ready to do roll call. And we are back. Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Shipley?
Here.
Mayor Nanda, here. We are all present. We have nothing to report. And we are ready to adjourn.
I move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai, second.
There was a motion. This is Mayor Nanda. We had a motion from Commissioner Larson, a second from Vice Mayor Finkeldai. Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Finkeldai?
Aye.
Mr. Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Nanda passes, aye, passes unanimously, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great night. Happy birthday, bud.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Appreciate it.